Thanks, Patty.
Good morning. It is exactly 9:00 a.m., Monday, November 17, 2025, and I am calling to order the special meeting of the Los Angeles County Probation Oversight Commission. I am Eduardo Mundo, Chair of the Commission. We look forward to hearing from our panelists, commissioners, and the public today on several important topics, including discussing the POC's observations and recommendations about probation's policies and practice for parent visitation, the progress on implementing probation's depopulation plan, a report back on the POC motion requesting data about transfers of youth to the adult court, a report on consultants engaged by probation, updates on recent requests for information, and finally, a report from our Executive Director. Before we move on, I'm going to ask my colleague, Commissioner Harris, to say a few special words about our staff on the POC.
Great, thank you. We just want to take a moment to recognize Wendy Julian and Dr. Sarah Gongora, who were recently given an award by the Office of Supervisor Lindsay P. Horvath in recognition of their dedicated service to the affairs of the community and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefit of all of the residents of Los Angeles County. We're proud of you and we appreciate you, and we just want to take a moment to acknowledge you.
That was not on the script. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Now I'm flushed. As always, we encourage real public participation at the Probation Oversight Commission and welcome those of you who are joining live with us today at St. Anne's or those who are able to join with us online. You can comment on any item on our agenda. The way we'll do that is a presentation of the item on the agenda, and then the commissioners will discuss, make any motions that are relevant, and then we'll take public comment before any decisions are made. And then also, at the end of the meeting, there'll be an opportunity for general public comment for any items within the purview of the commission that are not on the agenda. We will have two minutes for public comment on each item for each member of the public, unless there are more people that want to participate than we have time for. And if that is the case, we will consider scheduling additional town halls for specific issues. There are a couple items on the agenda today that I think may end up going that direction, where the commissioners may have more questions than discussion, where we may either schedule things on further agendas or town halls. I'd like to ask to have folks share, to have folks follow the code of conduct, including stop speaking immediately when your time ends, so I don't have to interrupt you. Make sure your public comment relates to the subject matter of the item. Remain respectful of each other and the forum. If you're here in person, it's easy to participate, just come to the podium. If you are joining via WebEx, use the little raise your hand function or dial *3 on your phone, and that will put you in line. I want to make sure that you know if you want to participate publicly, you cannot be watching on YouTube. There's no interaction with the viewers on YouTube. You have to join on WebEx. You can learn how to do that by going to our website and clicking on the Meetings tab and the Agenda, and that will take you to the WebEx link. If you want to make your comment in writing, you're welcome to do so. Some of you already have, thank you. Send us an email to info@poc.lacounty.gov. We send those out to the commissioners and publish them to either the Agenda or the Minutes, and then they are, they do become part of the public record if we receive them before 5:00 p.m. today. Please do not send your public comment in the chat on WebEx. Only the host will see it, the commissioners don't see it, and it won't be logged as public comment. If you need any accommodations today, either if you're live here, please go see Janie and Sarah in the back of the room. If you're online, you can send a message to the host in the chat. Please also do that if you have any technical questions. Our meeting is being recorded and broadcast live today to our YouTube channel, but there's, and we encourage you to subscribe to our YouTube channel and all of our social media on Facebook, Instagram threads, Blue Sky. It's L.A. County POC. For more information about our meetings, and please invite others to attend. I'm now going to call the roll. Commissioners, please respond when I call your name. Commissioner Dolores Canales?
I am here, thank you.
Commissioner Brooke Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Ashay Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Millie Kukani?
Here.
Commissioner Don Meredith?
Here.
Commissioner Sam Prater?
Here.
Commissioner, you're out of my line of business. Good morning. Commissioner Tyreek Ship will join us later. Commissioner Diane Terry is ill this morning and regrets not being able to attend. Chair Eduardo Mundo?
Present.
Chair Mundo, we have quorum, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Wendy. Let's proceed with item two, the approval of the October 9 regular meeting minutes. Wendy, do we have any written public comments or live public comments?
Anyone wishing to make live public comments? There are no written public comments. The minutes are attached to the agenda.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the October 9 regular meeting minutes?
Motion to approve those minutes.
Seconded.
Kukani, motion, and seconded by Commissioner Canales. Are there any changes to the minutes? Concerns? Okay, hearing none. Commissioners, please vote with a voice vote.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. We will now move to Agenda Item Three. For Agenda Item Three, we will discuss and take possible action on including a vote to approve the POC's visitation inspections report of Los Pedrinos Juvenile Hall and Berry J. Nadorf Secure Youth Treatment Facility. The commission asked the POC staff to observe and report on how visitations are handled at the juvenile facilities, and they did so along with support from commissioners, speaking to hundreds of parents and guardians and probation staff members. The policy ad hoc subcommittee also met with representatives from OICR and POC staff member Jennifer Ochoa Garcia, took a look at visitation policies from around the state. The subcommittee has also met with probation to talk about their observations and concerns, and I am pleased to say that Chief Deputy Arcos has already begun the process of addressing many of the issues that have come up. This process has been a good example of the POC's model of change, and I'm happy to hear from Dr. Gongora and then Chief Deputy Arcos about how we can collaboratively improve the visitation of parents for our parents without compromising safety. Please go ahead. Dr. Gongora?
Okay, we do have a PowerPoint for this, just to help folks at home follow along. Wendy, do you want to?
No, it's also attached to the agenda.
Okay, great. Okay, so first, I want to say thank you to all of the commissioners and POC staff who did these inspections. And most of all, I want to thank the visitors and young people who took time to speak with us. The families were just really brave advocates of, for themselves and for all system-impacted people in our county, and it's really a privilege to be able to lift up their voices here. Okay, first slide. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, here we go. Okay, so in August, our POC commissioners here at our live meeting motion for staff to conduct visitation inspections. So we observed visits at the two sites with the highest populations in the county, Los Pedrinos and Berry J. Nadorf. We did eight inspections only on Saturdays and Sundays, and it was immediately clear to commissioners that the process at Berry J. Nadorf was running really so smoothly that we didn't need to do a ton there, and that information came both from their direct observations and from speaking to the families. So I, just as we go forward, a lot of the findings and recommendations are really aimed at Los Pedrinos, so I want to be very clear about that. I also want to say that some of the issues that we observed during this process may be improved by adoption and fidelity to a clarified policy. And we're so thankful that the state's Office of Youth and Community Restoration are working directly with Deputy Chief Arcos to present that policy coming, I think, in the next month. I also want to say that at a couple of the Los Pedrinos inspections, the visitation was really greatly improved over some of the other days. And so, you know, before we get into any of the meat and potatoes of the findings, I just want to make the point that seeing that things could be better on some days really led us to believe that probation can do this. They can tighten up the visitation, they can be welcoming to parents. So we're making these recommendations with the full heart that this is all possible. Okay, let's go on. Okay, so the inspections were based on some observations, but mostly through interviews, and that's how we arrived at the findings and recommendations. I wanted to include some of the really impactful statements made by visitors that discussed the themes that came up over and over again, especially about inconsistencies in the dress code and other issues that resulted in parents being turned away or left feeling mistreated. One thing that visitors noted was that they would very willingly go through all the security steps and basically anything that came at them to be able to see their kids while helping to make sure that drugs or other contraband weren't making it into the facilities. Parents were concerned about substances or other stuff coming to the facilities, so I wanted to share that. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, we also had the opportunity to go inside of the facilities and speak with young people about their experiences with visiting. Some of that had very concerning results, the most concerning of which was actually how many young people told us they don't get any visits at all, ever. Also of serious concern was young people informing us they had had visitors turned away and were not informed of that by probation. They had to learn about it days later through phone calls with family, you know, after thinking that nobody had shown up for them. So while these are just a few quotes, I myself interviewed 16 young people, and I wanted to share that they were all really clear about being solution-focused. They all were like helping to give ideas about what could help make visitation better, and they were also very clear about the fact that they want visits. They want visits with their parents or with their trusted adults. They really want to feel like people are showing up for them. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so I included this quote from this parent because it really touched my heart. So while many visitors discussed the negative effects of not being able to touch their loved ones, and that included from some parents' observations of deteriorating mental health of their children, this quote from a parent is a question I've come back to myself numerous times. I'm going to read it in Spanish because that's how it was said to me. Why do we go through all this security and then still we can't give a hug, right? So if all the security measures are working, like the visitors remove their shoes, they pass through body scanners, they're sniffed by dogs, there are regular unit searches. So if it's working, then why isn't it possible? Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so all of these interviews and observations led to these recommendations. I'm just going to kind of read through them. So number one, once probation's visiting policy is revamped, distribute it widely and follow it consistently. So I've read and reread probation's most recent policy. It's in the DSB manual. The most recent was updated in April 2024, and it just really doesn't match some of the documents and verbal guidance that was given at visitation. Recommendation two, policies for visitors should be up to date, relate only to safety and security, and be simple, fair, and clear. So the policy as written is actually, it appears much more lax than the rules applied at visitation, including like folks being turned away for some tattoos, certain clothing items, and shoes that aren't actually explicitly prohibited in the dress code. Many visitors relayed their experiences of their sense that probation changed rules at will. This is also the part where people started saying things like they felt discriminated against or they felt profiled in some way. Recommendation three, probation should strive to create a culture of customer service at visitation. So many visitors told us that their experiences at LP felt like probation was discouraging them from visiting, that they were treated with suspicion, spoken to in rude or condescending tones, which unfortunately, on some occasions, was observed. I also have to say I continue to be dismayed by the number of times I've heard probation employees refer to parents as aggressive. You know, when we hold attitudes or ideas about people, it comes through in our interactions with them. People can feel that, and so, you know, trying to hold people in positive regard and remember that we are serving the public, it's very important. Recommendation four, probation should share information about visitation in a variety of accessible formats. So equity and accommodation are lacking in some sense. One person that we spoke to, not at the, not at the visitation, but separately during this time, that person had visual impairments. They told us they repeatedly asked for information in braille or in a read-aloud format, and that it was never provided. Other people told us they had called and received incomplete information from a live operator and then resulted in their turn away from visitation later. So there are so many creative and inexpensive solutions that could probably get at this, right? And Deputy Chief Arcos and I had an opportunity to talk about what some of those opportunities would look like, like could probation do a pre-recorded phone line that has all the information in English and Spanish? Or could probation, like, get, do text reminders or run a banner on the website possibly, right? So just something that makes it really accessible for parents to find. Yeah, let's go to the next slide. All right, I'm not going to read off recommendation number five, but this is really about the department doing and investing some time into maintaining family connections for young people, like doing family finding, right? So there's a wealth of research telling us that maintaining and strengthening family connections, whether that be with biological family or chosen family, right, that's really critical to the well-being of all young people. And so that seems like something that should be required. Visitation also, it's exactly two hours long, which is what is legally minimally required, so could extending of that time be considered? We saw numerous parents that showed up right at that 30-minute cutoff point that got turned away. We also saw that some adults who had approved special visits with young people who showed up, like biological aunts or uncles or adult siblings, and then they weren't able to come in for visiting, which we understand it's like a different thing, but could there be some considerations made around that just to get to best practices, right? Young people also told us, again, about not having visits. So we really think the department should want to figure out how to get them connected with adults that care about them. Okay, recommendation number seven. Oh, number six, sorry. Okay, so some of our parents, especially coming to the juvenile hall, it's like their first time, right? A lot of people do show up for the first time. They do need help navigating the process. And so we thought the county should consider contracting parent partners, just somebody who can help a parent to understand what the rules are, somebody who's maybe gone through this process themselves, that could really be a support during that time. Recommendation number seven, a list should be kept of all youth who did not receive an in-person visit each week, and they should be offered a virtual visit. So young people on one unit that we spoke to reported that FaceTime is treated as a reward on their unit, but it could also be used as a means for regular connection for young people that aren't getting visits. Some youth told us they have family in the Antelope Valley who can't make it. Some folks have family out of county, and even one young person that told us their parents are out of state, and they are not receiving any visits at any time. So even those youth who have family that can't make it, everybody deserves to have some connection. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, recommendation eight, probation should notify visitors of resulting changes to visitation in a timely way when youth are moved units. So on several occasions, we saw parents be told that their child was moved units, the parent had not been contacted, and therefore it was no longer either their visitation day or their visitation time. And I will say, on some occasions, we saw those parents turned away, and on other days, we saw exceptions made, right? So it's possible to do this to make sure that the kids get the visits. Recommendation number nine, you know, every effort should be made by the department to get people in, and rejecting people should be a last resort, save for safety concerns only, right? So if probation could start requiring a listed reason why somebody was turned away and like some sort of tracking document about why people are turned away, that would allow leadership to then analyze and figure out, you know, is there any pattern that could be addressed? Is there any solution that can be found to get more parents in? Yeah, and I also was able to speak to Deputy Chief Arcos about that, about ways that the department could really be creative, right? Like, could the department consistently provide locks for all of the lockers right outside to help get people in, again, updating the dress code, or even doing something like providing loner clothes for people that are having minor dress code violations? This is really an opportunity for the department to communicate through action that parents are welcome and wanted. And then our final recommendation, which isn't actually for the department at all, it's for our commission. So the POC should continue to do unannounced sporadic visitation inspections at Los Pedrinos and continue issuing recommendations until an acceptable culture is consistently observed. And the reason we did this and I put this recommendation in is because I heard too many times from parents that our presence had made a difference over the course of that month, and that things did get better over the course of the month, and some parents specifically articulated that this is what they would like. And so in honor of uplifting the voices of families, I wanted to include this and leave it for you all to decide if that's what you should do. Next slide. So that's it for our findings, and I'm happy to answer any questions, of course.
Commissioner Meredith?
A couple of questions. A couple of questions. One is, being from the 5th District, Antelope Valley is within that jurisdiction, and it's very remote, and that was being one of my concerns, how do we get parents down there? That's following to that is, the kids you talked to or the youth you talked to that said that they've had no contact, does that because their parents are not trying to, or is they're not being available to them, or they give you a reason?
So some of them said their parents didn't have gas money. Some of them said their parents had other caregiving concerns, like, for example, if they have younger siblings, you're not allowed to come to the facility and have a bunch of kids outside so you can come and visit, right? And so, like, we saw on some occasions where some parents showed up with other minor children, and they were not able to leave them there or have them there, right? So, but gas money was a concern and distance was a concern.
Well, as a follow-up to that, the concept of either Teams or Zoom or FaceTime would be an alternative, as long as it was supervised, so we could see what was occurring. But I agree with that. And I know we're talking about Los Pedrinos, but I think the policy should be consistent across all facilities so that we don't get this mixing of concepts that we do things. And I want to also thank the reserve probation officers who have been helping out with visitation, helping facilitate it. That's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to, oh, Commissioner Kukani?
I know, I had only observed visitation at LP, where I saw three different versions of what was acceptable clothing, what was acceptable, literally, there was one sign right when you walk in, there was one sign on a pillar, and then there was what was handed to an individual. So it's hard to kind of figure out which one you're supposed to go by, or if you have a recollection of one thing, lose the paper, whatever it is. So I was just curious if that was the same at Berry J. or if that was the same at any of the other facilities, or if that was unique to LP?
It seemed like it was unique to LP. I don't know if our commissioner who did an inspection at Berry J. would speak on it.
Berry J. was very straightforward. It had every, from the minute you got there to the minute the parents left, it was very clear what the dress code was. It was very clear who, you know, the probation officer, and I forget her name, it seems that she's there every week, and she does a very good job. She knew the parents. One mom had a dress code thing. She was brought to the side very discreetly, and she either, I don't know if she was given a different pair of pants or she had them in her car, but it was handled and fine, and she got to go in. It was very clear, like, you are going to be searched by dogs right here, and then there's another dog waiting for you inside. It was just like, the parents knew what to expect. There were lockers, there were locks, they were provided gas cards. Once they signed in and once they went through the process, they were provided gas cards. I think that should be, that was, that should be standard, right? Like, that's helpful. And, you know, parents commented that it was like worlds apart from LP, and, you know, it didn't require a ton of observation because it was so, it was done so well.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Canales?
Thank you. The National Institution of Health has actually done studies on family reunification with the incarcerated, where it contributes to the self-esteem, the well-being, everything, the family dynamics. And so I'm wondering if there's any way that we can use this actual data that's, you know, been studied and attributed to rehabilitation and productivity and maybe make some changes in our system to contribute more to family reunification and the benefits of that connection, and for those that cannot travel, have, you know, have those FaceTime. And for those, you know, I was once in the hall, and a youth was telling me that, you know, he couldn't see his sisters or his mom, and he wanted to go home. And I sat down with the director, and they showed me that the youth, they couldn't find his family. And in cases like that, you know, sometimes maybe the youth struggles with that, but they don't know how to communicate it. So maybe even getting some mentors and doing a survey and saying, you know, are you hearing from your family? Do you know where they're at right now? And where they can say, you know, no if they're not, and having some kind of mentorship established where they have that connection from the outside and that they know that somebody believes in them and somebody cares. I think that could be helpful, too.
Quick question?
I do just want to say, I want to go back to the contact hug. I just, I, that's an issue that I think we should really uplift, and I think the quote that Dr. Gongora read was really accurate. It's the same at Berry J. I went in, observed the visiting, and kids and parents are sitting like five feet apart and, but like close enough that you can hear the conversation with the other people. So like, if something had happened in your family, if there was a death or a good thing, or you're like kind of sharing that information in front of, you know, your, you know, the kids that are there and their other families, it's kind of, there's no privacy. And there's also like, if you have gone through the steps, if there's taken your shoes off, gone through metal scanner, been sniffed by dogs twice, you should be able to hug your child, and that child should be able to feel their parents. And we just have to get to a point where that is standard in every visit.
So I'm gonna ask Deputy Chief Arcos to go ahead and make his presentation, and then we can resume. Concerns, questions, and comments? Good morning.
Thank you, and good morning. Before I start with some remarks, I also, on behalf of the probation department, also want to acknowledge Executive Director Wendy Julian and Dr. Sarah Gongora for your recognition. want to acknowledge Executive Director Wendy Julian and Dr. Sarah Gangora for your recognition from Supervisor Horvath. We appreciate the collaborative work and the relationship we share with you. And if you could also allow me, I'd like to introduce Deputy Director Dave Willsgruber, who is our newest deputy director, he's over adult field. Seated to his right is our deputy director Gabriela Aguilera, who is over juvenile field and court services, also joining us today. I think Dr. Gangora's presentation and the visits that were provided by the commissioners serve a tremendous purpose of the work ahead for us and how we can be better. And in the meetings that we've had leading up to today, not only with OICR, there is nothing that we disagree with on this. We want to, we want to get better, we want to make the visitation much more seamless, smoother, less anxiety, less complicated, and less cumbersome for a parent who is, in most cases, is probably already having their worst day to go, to have a visit at either LP or any of our facilities. So, we know that we have work ahead, I think the recommendations here set a clear guideline and expectation for us to follow. We also anticipate hearing from OICR, which I've been holding meetings with them for the past several months, with a promise and a commitment collaboratively of a draft of what a visitation policy could look like, and to really work towards a number of the identified areas here in Dr. Gangora's report. And specifically, from my observations, I spent some time on the visitation side as well, and had the opportunity to share time with Dr. Gangora, is, it's at the beginning. It also starts with intake, when a youth is brought to LP, how the parents are notified, what they're given, what they're provided with direction for navigating through a very, again, a very difficult time for them. And that goes also to what we publish and post on our internet, links on a guide to follow, how to make a visit, social media posts, the recorded line in English and Spanish, updates to parents on movement of their, of their children from the facilities, all those things in real time. So, we know that the value of visitation, as Commissioner Canelas has pointed out, about reunification for the youth, for the parent, and also for our staff. If the youth has a great visit, a good visit, usually they are going to be in a, in a better mood, a better behavior, and better conduct for everyone involved in this. So, we, we know that the benefit of all that is as well. So, again, we are really thankful for the collaborative work, hearing us out and pointing things out that need to be, be better for consistency, because quite frankly, we have not been very consistent there. So, we know that we're going to put something together here soon, and we've already started identifying committees for the visitation policy. We will also work with external stakeholders and with Commissioner Ship, who is the point for the POC, to make sure that we're on the right path. So, I can take any questions as well. Yes?
Thank you. Before we move on, I was actually part of one of the visits, and I brought along my, our volunteer corps from Court Watch, and there were just two observations that I came away with. One was that it seemed the individuals that had the most problems on visiting day were the new ones. And I'm glad that Chief Arcos brought that up. It's, you know, parents are called, and their first shock is that their kid's arrested. And, and I've been on the other side of the call to explain to parents the visitation, but it never dawned on me that they're still in the fog of, of just not understanding what's going on, so I'm glad that that's going to be looked at. Number two, and it was the individuals that were with me that pointed this out, I guess I just become so used to it being, there was the number of armed people at visiting. It was just, you know, when I started counting, I was like, wow, how many people do you need with guns at visiting? And I was appreciative of that comment by one of the individuals that was with me, so, and I've shared this with Mr. Arcos, and he's looking into it, too, so I appreciate that. Before we move on this agenda, add him along further, I'm sorry, I move that we accept the attached visitation observation report as presented. May I have a second before we open the floor to discussion?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Kukani, thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing to the conversation, sort of to echo what Commissioner Meredith said about reasons why some parents can't come. I also had the opportunity to go a couple of times for visitation inspections. Another reason why some parents don't come is because of immigration status, and I think that there is absolutely reasonable concern at this time about that, which is another really important reason to focus on those FaceTime and virtual visits as an option.
Thank you. Commissioner Canelas?
There's an opportunity for that comment, because I just want to make sure that we are saying the same thing. It is reasonable for parents and family members to be scared, given what has happened in Los Angeles County, but I just want to make clear, there is no policy within the county or probation that would put them at risk for visiting one of our facilities. So, we do not enforce immigration policies.
Of course.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Commissioner Canelas?
Yes, thank you so much. I just want to thank you, you know, for your presentation, that you're considering everything and trying to put together a formidable plan that we'll be able to move forward in a productive way, but as Commissioner Brooks mentioned about the contact, is that something that you're, that you're actually evaluating in this process right now?
I'm sorry, I, I think that was, here to Mr. Arcos, but I just, I just want to make sure. We appreciate all of these recommendations, and what you really are describing is family dynamics, and the fact that we have an identified person in our system, but really, the rehabilitative process means that we have to include everybody in their network of support, and the folks who both sort of contributed to leading them there, and the folks that are going to support them when they get out, and so, we agree with all of that. I'm a little concerned when we jump into sort of under the guise of best practice, things that have to do with security, because ultimately, we have to balance the fact that, and before all of you, if there is any child that has used drugs within one of our systems, you're very clear that the responsibility of that falls on me and the department. So, then, to consider things that sort of encroach on that security component concerned me very much. So, just to, and I'll, I'll make this my last comment, to consider things like, well, now you've done enough security, now there should be contact, I think would be improper in that, in fact, no, drugs still get from parents even after all this effort, and all of the security efforts are going to be imperfect, but there's only one entity that you're going to find responsible for it. So, I would just say to give us a little bit of leeway in determining what enough security is to keep, to have a good drug intervention program. What is much more helpful, and we truly, truly appreciate, are these types of recommendations, recommendations that come from observation, from determining what the facts are first, and then giving us very specific things that we can do, that then you can go back and measure. Areas that sort of get into the security component, which you really can't measure, such as, did this security measure mean that you were 100% safe in not being able to get drugs into the kids, while at the same time criticizing us, because kids are still under the influence? I would just ask to reconsider that, and really, what is of utmost help to us, and I know the people in Los Angeles County are these, because these put our feet to the fire, which are, look, this is what we saw, this is what you can do immediately, and then maybe give a little bit of room and grace on the security portion. I'll get off my seat.
Thank you for that comment, Chief, because it does make it clear. And I just want to revisit that, when we started talking about the drugs and the security, this same commission voted on, probation said they needed dogs, they needed scanners, and the same commission passed that, and, and we've been visiting the contact visit, realizing the benefits of the contact, one hug, you know? We've been talking about it, I think, for two years now. I think it first came up, it's been about two years. And I know because we've had the outreach from the public, we had the outreach from various entities, so that is why I thought, you know, we would have been a little bit farther along, but I appreciate your feedback.
And I'm breaking my first promise, but what helps sometimes is if you go back in committee and then recommend, I'm not suggesting you make this recommendation and give me one more thing to do, but when recommendations come back, such as, you know, we noticed that kids are at different parts in their journey when in the facility, and it's one thing to say within the first 21 days that you have a family visitation, versus you've been with us for a while, there has been a case management plan, and now it's not a normal visitation, right? Because we have different types of visitation. One is the large visitation, where everybody is coming in, versus the special contacts, such as when they have children that are coming to visit them. And so, maybe the challenge would be to throw back to us, hey, shouldn't you have different types of visitations, so that you can have privacy on some of them when you have something going on with your family, so that you can have a clinical social worker, for example, with you, if there's going to be contact, so that if you could, maybe that's the challenge, versus changing the way we do the large-scale visitation.
Thank you. Commissioner Kukani?
I just wanted to follow up on some things that Mr. Arcos shared. I remember on August 14th, when Ms. Roman was here, she had shared that there is a policy unit working on a new policy related to visitation. I don't think we ever heard back related to that. It sounds like you all are now working with OICR. You mentioned that there is a promise and commitment for draft, for a draft visitation policy. Is there a date? Just so, you know, when we talk about accountability, sometimes those specifics are really helpful, because when it's just a loose mention of, there's a policy unit working on a policy and no other specifics, it's really hard to move forward on this.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. What was the first step, and that was to grab the policies and vet them out, where we're identifying that we do have some inconsistencies in the policies that we need to sort out. And then, as we were working, and went back several meetings ago, when first met with Alyssa Hart and OICR, we were working towards having something, I believe, for this meeting or the last meeting that was canceled, but they tabled that to December.
Okay.
So, just a little hesitant to move too far ahead of that without looking at what they proposed, because we've had some very comprehensive meetings, and they have taken a look across the nation for also best practices to recommend to us as well.
Okay, so your hope is to receive something from OICR by December, and then sometime to respond to that with something of your own?
Correct. I believe they want to present to you in December, if that's, if I'm mistaken.
Okay. And then you said that you have identified committees. What does that mean?
We want to take staff from each of the facilities to set up our, our visitation committee, and to start looking at how we can grab consistency. We'll also use our communications director and team as well, and then work with Commissioner Ship to see who he recommends on some external stakeholders that can use in the committee.
Do you have a timeline for that?
I'd like to kind of wait till December to see what they have. I would love to have something in the first quarter of 2026 or before that, but that's, you know, again, a reach, hopefully not too much, though.
That's a long time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let's try, but we'll try sooner.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions, and I look forward to following up with you related to progress on those things. I just, as I was sharing with Commissioner Harris, and I just feel like it's so important to remember how we're coming at this, you know, like, I have a 12-year-old who, because of his age, could be incarcerated at LP. I mean, he lives a pretty privileged life, so it feels unlikely, because he gets the benefit of the doubt more often than not, but I think about when I travel for work, I'm gone for three days, and it is still so important for him and my nine-year-old and me to make that connection every single day. And if, because I'm busy all day and they go to bed before I have a chance to, like, connect with them, it wrecks them, and then it wrecks me. And can you imagine being away from your kid for months and not having consistent contact? And I just hope that your staff, that you, like, come at this with some semblance of humanity, and I appreciate the way that you started this conversation and like a desire to do that, but bearing witness to visitation on a Saturday at LP broke me.
Me, too.
To be turned away because your shoes didn't have a back on them? I just, like, it's, I don't know, I just, I feel like it's so important to come at it with that perspective, that like, these are people
Yeah.
who need this connection more so probably than you and I ever will, because we have, like, consistent, stable, fulfilling, I don't know, like, relationships and like, that we can rely on.
Yeah.
Like, we come from a place where we know grownups come back.
Right.
A lot of these young people don't, and so, I just, I urge you and your department to just, like, hold that close as you move this forward, and I hear you saying that we're going to wait until the first quarter, but every single day that we put this off, like, we are, we are hurting people.
Yes. I hear you, Commissioner, and I, I share the same empathy that you have, and believe me, we are working with a sense of urgency. I think, as you mentioned, your 12-year-old, when your 12-year-old's an adult, it's the same feeling when you don't see him as well. And I'm pretty sure in our pre-meeting I shared with you, that I do have lived experiences of that feeling, and I know what they're going through, and it breaks my heart as well. So, we're trying to be better, but we also have to have some balance to that, working, going forward, we will take everything into consideration to make it much more meaningful and beneficial to everybody involved.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, and Chief, thank you for mentioning, we're sort of tying this all back to security. Obviously, that's what's upholding some of our concerns on the one hand. How much safer are the facilities as a result of some of the security measures that you've implemented? The scanners, the dogs, do you see any correlation between those measures and like contraband inventory decreasing, et cetera?
Yeah, drug addiction program is very complicated and is more than simply having security at the entrance. And so, I tried at the beginning, and then I just sort of asked myself, sometimes I talk too much, and simply say that the expectations of, for example, adding dogs, that that would simply make everything go away, or that adding a scanner, I think there was an overreliance on technology and the things that are visual. Because really, what we're dealing with is underground drug market and drug addiction, and if we really knew that there were three best practices, then we wouldn't have the opioid epidemic that we have all across the United States. So, it's much more complicated. What I can tell you is that we are doing the things that had to be done, that in order to go back to best practices, to run the facilities as they should, as responsible adults, we had to have those measures in place. And so, that I know that it has had a result from the first part of drug interaddiction, which is simply putting everybody on notice that this is not a place to do this, to come to the front door, and that you will be held accountable, because we take the safety of our kids and our staff seriously. So, now, because that's not the only way that drugs come in, and because we still have to deal with the more important thing, what is going on inside the facility? We're receiving kids with drug addiction, are we providing enough substance use disorder treatment? Are we, those are still areas that I think we'll see more of a result once we get more and more capacity when it comes to that. So, what I would say is, it's tough to tell, because if I catch more drugs, does that mean I'm safer now, or does it just mean I'm catching and cataloging now? Or does, it's a really tough measure. I don't know if that means it's successful, because I'm catching them now, or I'm not successful, because it means that there's still drugs in the system at play versus folks moving onto a different market. I don't know that we have really good measures for that. It's the right thing to do, it's the adult thing to do, and now we have to do step two, which is to deal with the addiction component of it, or the substance use disorder.
Yeah, I understood, that's why I was speaking more to like correlation versus causation, because it's sometimes very difficult to pinpoint where the effective things are, but yeah, thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Jackson, thank you for bringing that up, and I will say that under item number seven on the agenda, there is attached the contraband report, for the most recent contraband report. Another place where we have shared information that confirms what the chief just said, which is that sometimes this is about doing a better job
Another place where we have shared information that confirms what the chief just said, which is that sometimes this is about doing a better job with searches and interdiction, is in OIG's recent report to the DOJ monitor, which shows significantly higher levels of compliance with the search rates, I guess I would call it. So the contraband report, to be honest, if you look at it, I don't love it for a couple of reasons. One is things like one pill is considered one item, which is then equated to like one weapon, when it may have been 30 pills in one tiny thing in one. So there's some problems with the numbers. Also, just for the public, when you look at this, there's a category called other that is the largest category. And I think it's really important to know that that is contraband that is not included in all of the other definitions. So like, it doesn't include weapons or drugs or any of the other things that are, it's things like oversized hygiene items or things that are, are in fact contraband, but not things that are called out by name. So there are some problems with the report, but it does help for comparison purposes to show some of the questions that you're asking with the caveat that they're doing more searches. So I think that that would be a place where folks can look under item number seven.
Okay, it is now 9:49, and I'm sure the public would love to weigh in with this discussion. So out of mind, do we have any written or public comment on this item?
I don't believe we have any written public comment on the visitation policy. Am I right about that, Janay? You're welcome to submit it at info@poc.laccounty.gov. Anybody in the room want to make public comment? Or if you're online and want to make public comment, use the raise your hand function or dial star three on your phone. Good morning, Helen.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to thank you all for shining the light on all of this with visitation. It was shared with me once from one of the young people, that the first time his dad came to visit, he cried because he couldn't hug him. And now he's gotten used to it. And I, I totally hear you on the security thing. We don't want drugs coming in, but we're also talking about human beings. And I don't know how we find a balance here. We have the better security, but these kids, we need to do everything we can so that they can make some kind of contact and be with their families. Because it's part of their development, it's part of their healing. So I appreciate really this conversation. Thank you.
Lupe Ross, welcome. Good morning. We're going to unmute you. Lupe, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Good morning, go ahead.
Good morning. I appreciate the discussion with the chief and Mr. Abros also. I would like to hear, as far as the drugs are concerned getting into the facilities, what is the policy going to be in connection to staff? Because we've read and heard a lot about staff bringing drugs into the facilities. And so far, I think I've only heard about visitors bringing them in. I'd like to see if he can expand on that, please. That's it.
Is that it for public comment?
Anybody else? No, that's it. Thank you.
Chief?
Is that a prompt to respond to the question or to the next part?
If you would like.
Yes, so, so staff does go through the same security. And I, I think we were just talking about it because we were talking about visitation. But really, one of the most difficult changes that we have made is the fact that everybody goes through that same security. Staff does on every single shift, despite the fact that we're then, you know, putting the young people in their care once they're on the other side. So we've made no exceptions. I go through the exact same security every time I visit. This is for everybody that goes into the facility. It's for both staff security and for the young people and to create an environment that ultimately, you know that if you're on the other side, that then this, this should be a safe environment.
Thank you. If there are any questions, concerns, a question, thank you.
Just related to the K-9 policy, I believe Mr. Arco shared the, like, the things that are identified by the K-9 policy. I was just wondering if you are also going to potentially revisit that? Or, you know, for example, the K-9 might alert someone because they have like a THC residue or because, I don't know. I saw here commonly abused prescription drugs, right? Perhaps the person has a prescription. I know that an attorney was recently turned away, but they had a prescription for Adderall. So all that to say, like, is there a revisitation or like a, some way to further address that? Or even document how many people are, is there any data on how many folks are turned away and for what reason?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're documenting the turn, the turnaways and on the K-9 alerts. And I think we, we talked a little bit about it or around it in our pre-meeting was that we need to look at an additional layer if that person who's alerted, if they're going to be, if they'll consent to a search. So those were the other things we have to take a look at as well.
Thank you. Hey, my motion, seconded by Commissioner Kokani, you are voting to accept the attached visitation observation report as presented. Oh, that's yours thing.
I'll just, I'll just be here to call the roll if you want me to.
No, 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 go.
Okay, so please vote yes, no, or abstain on the motion that Commissioner Mundo just read out. Commissioner Canales?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson? Commissioner Kokani?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith? Commissioner Prater?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ship and Terry are absent. Chair Mundo?
Yes.
So with the absence of Commissioner Ship and Terry, the motion passes unanimously.
Great. Agenda item four, which is to discuss and take possible action on the Los Angeles probation department's depopulation plan update. Chief Deputy Bobby Arco will start off by giving us an update on Board of State and Community Corrections Compliance and on the movement of girls and gender expansive youth to campus Kilpatrick. Then we will hear from Director Suzanne Lyles and Acting Deputy Director Jocelyn Roman on the process by which predisposition youth are selected to be moved from LP to Berry J. And how predis, predisposition youth, particularly those with developmental disabilities, who have been moved are receiving services at Berry J. I think the chief's going to take over on this one.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll start. Unfortunately, okay, unfortunately, once again, I visit you pending a continued hearing on a filing for receivership this Friday, an upcoming return to the court that approved the depopulation plan in two weeks, and a board of supervisors, a public hearing tomorrow with respect to this topic. And so there's, there's not a whole, a lot of detail I can give you. But I think I could just catch everybody up where we are, which the depopulation plan, in essence, was an approved plan to move young folks throughout the system to other facilities in addition to a revisiting of the intake process with an expectation that this would reduce the number of young people at Los Pedrinos. And in turn, that would put the county in a better position to meet the staffing requirements by the Board of State and Community Corrections. So that's sort of, those are all the dot connectors. We presented that the utilization of the existing facilities would best serve both the young people that we have and stabilize our staffing situation by housing young people with some common needs in different facilities. So that means that we would truly attempt to make Los Pedrinos for predisposition boys. That Nidorf would be utilized as two facilities. One as a true SYTF facility and the other as a juvenile hall for kids that are still in the predisposition phase but had been identified likely to follow the SYTF track. That Kirby would then be fully utilized for boys with higher needs, such as the large population that we have with developmental disabilities. And that Kilpatrick, as, that campus would be repurposed for girls in our system, period. That would be the only location where we would be housing girls. And then there were some minor changes to utilize the East camps and being able to move those that had a camp order there faster and they could do their assessments there, so that they would not linger waiting for assessments at Los Pedrinos. Where we are today is that our population is around, it's in the low 230s to 33 today at Los Pedrinos. Kilpatrick has been activated for females, and they have 16 there as of today. And the SYTF juvenile hall or the Nidorf juvenile hall has around 33 present there. The plan is to continue the depopulation plan, and that would mean that if we continue those moves, my expectation is it would be closer to somewhere between 200 and 205 by next month at Los Pedrinos, inching us toward that, that goal of having a lower number at Los Pedrinos and being able to utilize those other facilities for the specific populations. That, that's where we are today. And my folks are going to have specific presentations and answer your questions on all of the specifics of it, such as how, how were young people selected to move between one location and the other? How has the move to Kilpatrick gone, given the challenges that have been presented? They'll be able to give you the details on those, but for general questions on the depopulation plan, I'm happy to take those now if you're.
Let's move on with all the presentations. Please.
Where, where do you want to start, Commissioner? Which, which portion?
Ten of youth that are transferred from predispo at Los Pedrinos to predispo at Berry J. The data I've seen basically suggests that there are only about 30, 35 kids that have disposition, recommendations of secure youth tracks. So it seems to me like there's actually no decision, except just if they have that, they move over.
Okay. And, and before I turn that over to Deputy Director Roman on that, the chief has also asked operations to place focus on all of our facilities and that we're working much more unified and not kind of in silos. So we can take a look at when our youth are recommended for placement or for step down, that we are, we have a coordinated effort going towards that. So we charged Director Catherine Bay with doing that, and then she's reporting weekly to us on that progress. And I'm hopeful that it's going to get us much more aligned with making good decisions on the, on the front end and not delaying movement. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director, Deputy Director Roman, no longer acting, by the way.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. So what we did was we got together with our juvenile field services, which gathered data. Ms. Suzanne Lyles can share some more information when she comes up. And institutions, along with her, went over all of the recommendations that we had several weeks before we even started the transfers to make sure that we were accurately moving youth. So she gathered all of that information. We met regularly, we determined what youth would move. We scheduled them out over several weeks, making sure that we were mindful about how many we sent, not sending too many at the same time, taking a look at the culture of the facility. And I think we did a pretty good job. There was a couple of bumps in the road, we had to make some adjustments, as we anticipated we would, which is why we tried to slow roll it out. Overall, as the chief mentioned, we now have 33 youth over at Berry J Nidorf, and all of those have SYTF recommendations. As noted by Mr. Mundo, they are recommendations, that is not meaning that they are ordered SYTF at that time. So some of those youth have since gone to camp and had other dispositions. But at the time of moment, they were recommended for SYTF.
And, and part of that configuration with, with Berry J is to have a distinction between the SYTF side and the juvenile hall side. So we appointed Director Lucas Martinez to be the, the assistant superintendent over the juvenile hall side of Berry J to really separate the two and making sure that we had ownership of the units on, on the juvenile hall side. So Director Suzanne Lyles here is, is here as well to speak on how the SYTF recommendations come to her. But that's what you want to, want to hear next?
Yes.
Okay.
So for SYTF recommendations, what usually happens is that the DPO will prepare the report. There's eligibility and suitability requirements that are put into the report. And at that point, once they get to the court, we're notified by the court officer that a SYTF recommendation has been made. And then that would make the list of those youth who are on track to potentially move over to Berry J.
Hey, with that, I just had one question. Is anybody tracking the actual final disposition of those youth? So let's say they're, they're recommended for security track. What percentage of the youth that have been disabled are actually going to security track?
Of the original list, I can't exactly give you the percentage off the top of my head, but I know out of the original group that went over, seven have gone on to a secure youth into the facility from the recommendation.
And how many have not?
Let me double check because I just wrote it down. And then we have seven that ended up with a camp order. So those got moved over to camp. We had another one who ended up at suitable placement. And then we also had an additional youth who was eventually released home.
Thank you. It's nice having prepared people, right? Good info.
I have a quick question. As you know, we're a commission, we appreciate specifics. And so I'd like to ask you to maybe give us some insight into the bumps in the road that you guys experienced and how you course corrected.
So we opened up a third unit to be able to separate the youth out a little bit more. And what we saw was that some of the original ways that we thought that they would get along didn't quite work out that way. So we separated them, we did some movements. Obviously, we have our housing classifications. We made adjustments, not just based on age, but also on offense and trying to find what's the proper balance to decrease the incidents that were occurring within the units. So that was the primary focus that we had. We've also, with the addition of the assistant superintendent to the area, have had a lot more ability to rotate throughout the units, talk to the kids, see what the issues are, and be a little bit more proactive on addressing any concerns that they might have.
I'll add a little bit more to that. At the same time, when we're moving those, those boys over, we were also dealing with communication to staff about opening up a CVK, reassigning staff from Camp Page to Berry J to help off, to help supplement the numbers. So there was a little bit of, of that confusion going on as well with our, our staff. So we had to do a little bit better job of communicating to them early on in that.
Commissioner Harris?
Thank you. It's been about three years, but when I was a defender in court, we would get pre plea reports two weeks after a young person was arraigned. And that would contain a recommendation, camp, suitable placement. We didn't have SYTF at that point, it was pre-realignment. I, Ms. Lyles, I'm a little confused about the process that you just described for an SYTF recommendation. Is the, the two-week pre plea report coming with the SYTF recommendations? Or is that, has that process changed? And I'm talking about that two-week period again, which is a very short amount of time between when a kid gets arrested, arraigned, and then is due back in court, you know, two weeks later. That's, that, that doesn't give a lot of time. So I'm just wondering if for the SYTF recommendations, if that process has changed based on what you outlined a few minutes ago about how the recommendations get made as far as eligibility and suitability?
So no, it hasn't really changed in that those timeframes are set out by the court. So our recommendations come in within that timeframe that is set out by the court.
So has there been any updated training provided to DPOs with respect to making recommendations for SYTF? It's, it's a new, new-ish program that's being run by the department. It's serious, right? It's, it's the most serious recommendation you can now make, except for transfer to adult court, which I understand we're talking about later. Have you, have you provided updated training about really what it takes to make a recommendation for someone to go to SYTF?
Yes, we did. When SYTF was first a disposition option, we did train entire juvenile field on the criteria and the eligibility. Well, it's the eligibility, which means, you know, on the criteria and the eligibility, well, it's the eligibility, which means, you know, 14 over, 707 BF fence, in addition to the suitability, which are the five suitable factors that are in the legislation that tell us should these youth be appropriate for SYTF after evaluating those five criteria? So an entire field was trained in that when that legislation was passed.
And does that, does that evaluation or that suitability require the department? It's required in the law. So I'm wondering what the department's policy is on requiring the, the less or least restrictive alternative? That's a, that's a requirement in Welfare and Institutions Code, Section 875, that, you know, we're really trying to reduce the numbers of kids committed to long-term detention and that we were thinking at all times about is this the, the least restrictive alternative available in this county for this young person, given their unique needs? Is, has the, was, was the staff, the DPO staff trained on that? And is that part of their assessment when they're making that recommendation to the court and in their pre plea report?
Yes, because that's been part of our best practice for several years. When that mandate kind of first came down and I was a DPO, I would say probably 15 years ago, that was, we always consider the least restrictive disposition with any recommendation that made. Whether we're breaking HLP, can we consider a non, you know, formal probation? When we're recommending suitable placement, can home be considered? So we're always considering the least restrictive potential disposition whenever we make any recommendation.
And I can share that actually dates back to 1988 and before me. The, the concern I have though is given the emergency nature of the department is that you, there's, there's a randomness to who's doing these reports now because of the shortage. Is there a specific group doing juvenile investigations and or is it just whoever's in the office? Because I've heard that there are adults, people who work adult who have not worked juvenile that are also doing reports for juvenile?
For the most part, we do try to keep those reports with investigators, juvenile field investigators. There have been, of course, incidents, incidents where an adult person may do it for overtime. And so they are given the same, especially with SYTF, since those criteria are set in the legislation, they are given those criteria to consider when they're making their recommendations. And then any recommendation for SYTF also goes through the supervisor, the director, and also has to get screened through our out-of-home screening process. So they're also reviewing those recommendations on several levels before that recommendation makes it into report and then is presented into court.
Perfect, thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Harris, were you done? I just.
I wasn't, but I, but I don't want to.
Oh, no.
Okay. So I want to shift topics a little bit. I, I, I Berry J. is still not suitable as a juvenile hall, right? No, okay. So we moved 30 to 35 kids over there to an unsuitable juvenile hall that was closed as a juvenile hall two plus years ago. And we reopened it as a juvenile hall without the BSCC's approval.
Yep.
Okay.
But we, we're on, we're on calendar to, to have them moved again, I mean, to have it inspected again. And I think the chief has been clear a number of times with his commission and with the board of supervisors on that position, on the need to do what we needed to do to meet the judge's order.
You requested, I mean, I mean, yes, the judge made the order, but that was at the urging and the months-long urging of the department through their lawyers at these hearings to do this, right? I mean, this, 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 the, the chief's, the department's plan, one, got its day in court and one, at the, at the department's and the county's urging for this particular plan. So, you know, I, like, saying it was the court's order is a little bit, a little, you know, yes, the court made the order, but it was because that was the position that the department posited in court. And, and, and without, and saying, and like, just this idea that you could do that without getting the, the BSCC to approve that as a juvenile hall in, in the, in the beginning, I think it kind of takes away from the issues when, when you put it like that. It's my opinion.
I wouldn't describe it that way at all. Like I mentioned at the beginning, there are multiple court cases underway that in one way or another address some of your questions. Certainly not in a position to litigate those issues here. I think it would be inappropriate. I, I will give my best answer, knowing that it may not satisfy completely, but I hope it gives some insight. Ultimately, all of these questions are decided by the judiciary. And so many of the propositions that you've made are no longer theoretical because they're before a judge. And so if what your question is, are all of the facilities that we're utilizing, do they all have BSCC approval for that population? I think you know the answer to that is no. If then there is a separate claim, which goes at the core of this, is probation doing anything illegal? My answer has been and continues to be no. And they're before, these issues are being litigated before judges. The most important part for me, for the public to know in particular is at no point have we stopped communicating with BSCC, trying to achieve compliance, and having them continue to inspect. So in many respects, the fact that we're in this situation has not reduced the amount of oversight, but quite the opposite has increased it. At no point has the county or probation said, we're not going to follow the state regulations. We continue to do that. And it gets complicated because every single one of the facilities is in a different place in terms of what the BSCC is doing in their calendar and their schedule. Our, our plan is, and the depopulation plan in particular speaks to, for us to gain BSCC compliance in each one of the facilities that we're utilizing. Now, I'll, and maybe this will help your specific question, which is there's a difference between being found unsuitable and a difference between BSCC having granted approval for a particular population in a particular place. And so I think where you hear some of the hesitation from probation to answer it, in particular because we're in court and is there's a distinction between those and we don't want to misspeak. There's a difference between the Board of State and Community Corrections having gone out, you haven't failed a cap, not being able to meet, and then saying this is unsuitable for the placement of youth here. That's different than saying where you are in the cycle or you have a cap or we haven't even come out and inspected or we're not even considering it until down the line. Those are all very different and we want to be very respectful of county council being able to answer those in court. And it's not that we are in all of these facilities with the Board of State and Community Corrections having told us, don't be there. We're in different paths in each of them.
But you were told very specifically, and I don't recall, Chief, if you were at the helm at the time, but the county was told in no uncertain terms by the BSCC in June of 2023 that you had to close Berry J. as a juvenile hall. And that is why LP reopened, it had been shuttered for years. I mean, that is, that is what happened. That's why Berry J. closed. And so I guess the issue that I'm struggling with, and I appreciate your explanations, and I know you're explaining this four different times this week, if people are asking these questions. It just, you know, this is a really specific deliberate move, you know, when you were told by this entity to shut it down and shut the entire facility for the purposes of a juvenile hall. I know it stayed open as the SYTF, you know, but I think when we're talking about this specific, not CVK, not LP, but really this decision, there are some issues there.
I think the question's been answered. Any other concerns, comments, questions? Commissioner Kukani?
So sorry, it's after that two-week period of incarceration that a pre plea report is submitted to the court, either recommending SYTF or not. Is that right?
For the most part, it's again, that timeframe is set by the court.
And in that two-week period, you're also assessing how the young person is doing at LP? Is that right? Or at whatever carceral facility they're at?
By assessing?
Are they running a good program? Are they getting into fights?
They review their, what's noted in, in our probation case management system.
And is that part of the report to the court? Is that part of probation's assessment as to whether or not a young person should be recommended to SYTF? Whether a transfer should be recommended?
The DPOs take every information, all the information that they're able to gather into consideration when they're making their recommendations.
Okay, but that is a part of their recommendation, correct?
They take all the information they have available to them to make those recommendations.
It's just a yes or no question, okay. So how do you then, in those two weeks, when a young person is technically at an unsuitable facility, right? How, like, how is that factored into that recommendation? Like, if you're, if you're looking at how a young person is doing at LP, where we know that staff is kind of in and out, sometimes inconsistent, sometimes being held over, different people are coming in, sometimes programming is happening, sometimes it's not? Like, to what extent is that being taken into consideration?
That would probably be have to answer by the individual DPOs who are completing the report of how greatly they weigh. There is no specific, like, just say since they weigh 50% of, of our recommendation or anything like that.
Is that part of the training?
Certainly, it's part of the training to consider all the information.
Okay. And that training you said occurred, what, is it like ongoing that a DPO, the field staff receives?
For specifically for SYTF, we did train after the legislation was passed. So with us by about maybe three years ago, I would say approximately. And so, but it's always, for every recommendation we make, we're always considering all the aspects, all the information that we're able to gather.
Okay, I don't know. I mean, would love to hear from defense counsel the extent to which they see, like, the acknowledgement by the department that a young person may be struggling inside a carceral facility that is technically, whether you want to, you know, play semantics and say that, oh, it's up on hearing, we're waiting for an inspection, whatever that is, that technically unsuitable for the confinement of young people because of really legitimate concerns around staffing, really legitimate concerns around access to programming, access to education, just like, yeah, to what extent a young person, what extent that plays in whether or not a young person is being recommended to SYTF or not, especially given the numbers that you're sharing, where eight people who were initially recommended to be placed or dispo to an SYTF are ultimately placed in camp or suitable placement.
So before we move on to public comment, I actually was an investigator for the department and I did more of those reports than I would like to. We were making recommendations that were this serious before security track. There were DJ, DJJ recommendations and there were CYA recommendations. If you really want to know the process, it's simple. Kid goes to court for an arraignment. Two days later, an investigator gets the report and they get a week. And that's sufficient time for a good investigator. We make calls to the parents, we make calls to the school, we make calls to interested parties, we make calls to the victims. We read the report and then we make the decision. And yes, we do look at case notes and they do play a role in where the kids should be housed. And it's not a significant role, quite frankly. The rest of the information is significant. And I understand that, that the current state of the halls are not the best place for kids. We get that. I get that. And I hear it all the time in these meetings. But the fact is that the legal system is dictating the process. We just dictate the reports and the quality of the reports. And that's one question I haven't heard today. In looking at the qualities of the report, are we meeting industry standards? No, no, that's a question.
I believe we are. You know, every report, again, you have individual DPOs who are completing these reports. Everybody completes the reports. We do have a standard template. We ask them to follow, we do give them training, we do have guidelines that we ask them to follow. But at the end of the day, every individual DPO is the one who is completing the reports. Their supervisors are signing off on the reports. So what I believe, I haven't heard a lot of, I also have oversight over the court officers. And I do ask them if the courts have issues with any of the reports that they're receiving, you know, to please let us know. And I do occasionally do receive, you know, feedback from the hearing officers regarding the quality of the reports. But we try to address those issues and then I don't hear it a majority of the time.
And, and if we had a non-complicit public defender's office, then you would actually get more feedback from them, wouldn't you?
I would expect so.
Wouldn't you? So that's like the second tier of accountability. First, the department and then the people on the court, correct?
I would say so, yes.
So Wendy, do we have any public comment or written comment?
I know there is some written public comment that's been received on this item. Please feel free to send it at info@poc.lacounty.gov. Anybody in the room want to make public comment? And if you're online, use the raise your hand function. And just a reminder, you cannot make public comment if you're watching on YouTube. You got to join the WebEx and you can do that by going to the agenda link on our website under meetings. Good morning, Thomas.
Good morning. First of all, I want to start out with thanking Mr. Arco and the chief. The officers that page schedules were changed and overtime concerns were resolved. So thank you guys very much for handling that. But also want to, as we talk about transition and the kids going back and forth from different facilities, we also got to remember that the officers are also transitioning. The officers from Page had a big transition. Going to Berry J. from Camp Page was a big change in their lives. And when they got up there, you know, they was kind of promised that there was going to be a senior in every building. There's not. There was going to be shown how to use the guard, the little door wand thing. I'm not even sure what it's called. They weren't. A lot of them went up there, a lot with the field people, they were thrown into the most challenging units. And, you know, when, when you go from the camp that you've been at for years and then you get thrown into Berry J. into the most challenging units and you watch others get pulled out into the more easier unit, you start feeling a certain way. So I would ask that you guys also look into how the transition is affecting our officers as well. Officers at CVK, they're dealing with girls now. You know, I want to make sure that they're doing okay, that they're okay. I don't, they got, you know, we'll talk to them in a minute later, but they got a little issue with their schedule a little bit, but overall, they've been doing well. Officers that see DKC, sorry, I'm really tired. The issue with them is the women officers got reassignment letters, but the men did not. Now, last time I checked, we're all peace officers. It doesn't go by gender. So if they have the seniority to go, they should have their reassignment letters too, no matter what gender they are. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, what's a, you said a senior?
Can you speak into the mic, Commissioner Kukani?
When you, you said when they first got, oh, sorry. You said when they first arrived to Berry J., there, there wasn't a senior? Is that what you said?
Senior officer, that's the one.
Senior, okay, senior officer, okay, thank you so much.
So now they're being acting seniors.
All right, got it.
Thank you. We'll move to online public comments and we'll start with Tahida. Tahida Shakur?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, you can begin.
Okay, hello. Hello, my name is Sarah Shakur. As we gather here today, I want us to remember something simple but profound. Young people deserve care, connection and community, not confusion, neglect and shifting rules that harm both them and their families. What's happening inside the halls right now is more than a system failure, it's a human failure. Families are doing everything in their power to stay connected to their children, especially as we move into the holiday season, a time when togetherness should be the norm, not the exception. But for so many of our young people, that chance simply doesn't, not exist. Their chairs, their chairs at the Thanksgiving table will be empty. Their absence will be felt before the blessing is even said. And for families trying to show up, the obstacles are endless. I've stood outside Los Padreinos and watched parents travel for hours, taking, taking multiple buses, missing work, scrapping together whatever they can, desk to be turned away at the door because of a spaghetti strap, a strap on a shirt. I've seen families I've seen families arrive only to find out their child has been moved without warning. No phone call, no explanation, no humanity. Young people shuffled around like musical chairs, and the system can't even, that can't even hold itself to the basic standard of communication. It is baffling. It is disheartening and unacceptable. When you send a mother home because of a dress code, you're not enforcing order, you're erasing her effort, her love, her hope. You're treating parents as insignificant barriers, instead of essential partners in a young person's healing. Let's be clear, no matter, no matter what hall is recognized, renamed, or repainted, a facility that isolates children from their families, changes rules on women, and blocks human connection is not and will never be healthy or safe. Young people thrive when their community is intact, when they are seen, when they are heard, with dignity. This is unacceptable. Set down all the halls now. Thank you so much.
Next, we'll go to Jazara Holiday. Yes, you can begin.
Okay. My name is Jazara Holiday, She-Her Youth Justice Coalition. I'm here to educate and question you today. What is Youth Justice Coalition? YJC is a community youth center, a high school, and a nonprofit. In order for YJC to run and be all these things and have the lives of youths in our hands, we must be able to report and give data for our work. Our probation fails to provide data of youth in their facilities and even have went as far as falsifying data, highlighting the longstanding issues documented since 2015 that additional funding alone won't solve. $1 million contracts should be redirected to community-based programs and alternatives. Youth deserves support before and after potential incarceration. Thank you.
Before we move on to questions and concerns, I'm going to ask Director Binion to just update us a little on the operations at Camp Kilpatrick. How's it going?
Good morning, thank you. Kim Binion, Senior Director over Campus Kilpatrick, as well as Dorothy Kirby Center. In the beginning of October, CVK managers hosted our partner orientation for CVK partner agencies and CBOs, those that would be providing program services for our youth. We discussed safety, including evacuation routes or codes, contraband, CCTV monitoring, handling allegations and grievances, avoiding manipulation and boundaries. And we even added a facility tour for our partners just to give them a better idea of all of the spaces that the girls and gender expansive youth would be occupying. We wanted them to be familiar with the facility as well. So that was during our construction period. We shared our mission and vision for the new CVK program, as we are all girls and gender expansive youth. CVK's mission is to provide detained girls and gender expansive youth with treatment services, connect them to essential resources, and help them develop skills that promote long-term success in their communities. CVK is committed to end girls' incarceration, improve the lives and well-being of girls and gender expansive youth while ensuring healthier and safer communities. Our core principles are to have gender-responsive approach, trauma-informed care, equity and inclusion, human dignity, and respect. Staff begin their assignment at CVK on November 2nd, and our first set of girls arrive November 3rd. In that day and a half time, staff set up the beds, they search cottages and common areas to ensure a safe environment, even wrote welcome cards for the youth with affirmations. We recognize that this was such a significant change of environment, of city, just the structure of the dorms alone. It's just very different. And so we wanted to make sure that they felt welcome in their new environment. Upon arrival, youth were searched, they ate dinner in the dining hall, they were assessed by DMH and JCHS, our health service provider, and lastly made phone calls to their parent or guardian. Program service providers started the first week and the second week as well. Facility improvements continue to be made. We have a newly installed security guard shack in the driveway, installed in the front entrance as a additional security measure. We are still waiting on the remaining two to be delivered. We are still configuring the medical isolation observation room in our medical module. That is one of the deficiencies that were pointed out by BSCC. However, that room has not been in use. And even when the SYTF youth were there, it wasn't used for that purpose either. CVK has approximately transferred, I'm sorry, CVK approximately has 20 confirmed service providers that are scheduled throughout the week. We continue to have BSCC visits. Our DOJ monitor has been there a couple of times. And we continue to work collaboratively with our EGI partners, DYD, OICR, and the two identified CBOs.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, can you share a little bit about staff assignments, and then how you guys have been supporting them throughout the transition?
Can you ask?
Staff assignments, like how you picked staff that would be assigned to Kilpatrick, and how you've supported them throughout the transition?
So with Kilpatrick, the staff that were there prior to, when it was a step down, they had the first right of refusal, so they were asked first if they want to return. Then from there, a department-wide preference letter went out. It was a survey, and staff needed to, including myself, needed to submit what facility they preferred to work at. And that's where the list of names came from. So first, the former CVK staff, and then there, because we are all girls and gender expansive facility, there is a gender balance that we have to do with staff. So even though it is a complaint of many, it's still a BSCC standard to have same-gender supervision. So that really, that made us have to balance. We did a 50-50 balance with the staff, so there's 50% female, 50% male. And that's how, it was really technical. That's how it pretty much was chosen.
And how you're supporting staff members? Are you guys getting feedback on how it's working out for them so far? I think one thing we really want to be thinking about is how working conditions affect callouts, and if they're not in a supportive environment, it's going to perpetuate the issue. And so I'd like to hear more about that as well.
Well, the staff, because we were having additional staff, we had a staff trailer, housing trailer, for them to, to support the additional numbers. So that was of big concern, because they do have a 56-hour shift, and they do stay overnight. So that was a solution. Just as we spoke with our partner agencies and our CBOs, we asked for, gosh, I can't even think of the word, we asked for grace, because it's not perfect, and we understand that. So one of the things that we have done is, one of the first things that first week was look at our schedules, because it did not work as we wanted it to. And that was a significant change that we're looking at. So we, we being the managers of CVK, do assess frequently, because we do want it to work, and it will work.
Last question for now. Do you guys foresee?
Sorry, I wanted to add to that. She misses the fact that they did an orientation for all of the staff when they first opened up. Mr. Arco's, myself went up there, Ms. Evans was there, she was also there. So we engaged, we answered questions from the basics of how the staff would run, now that the population had changed, to more specifics, that they may be asking questions about what kind of programming they could introduce themselves as people who know how to provide programming, their experienced camp staff. Additionally, I personally went out the first day that we had visiting. I walked and I talked to every single staff and every single youth that was there, received feedback, got feedback about the schedules, met with the director and the supervisors on site. They were already working on it. I was able to contribute some thoughts and ideas. So the staff are definitely not an afterthought for us. We're actually putting them at the forefront. We're very well aware that our staff can provide better services to our youth if they feel like they're heard. So we're trying to be as proactive as we can.
Were there any staff that were assigned there that did not prefer to go there?
There was nobody that it was not on their choice card. It may not have been their first choice, maybe it was their second choice, but it was somewhere on their, on their list of choices.
Perfect, thank you.
Do you guys foresee any staffing issues in the, in the, in the future, in the near future?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Do you guys foresee any staffing issues in terms of, like, shortages in the future at the facility?
I don't think that we see staffing issues. I think we know that overall, we're having to make adjustments. We brought in, there's a couple of people that are starting out this week over at Kilpatrick. They're transferring from another location. So we're making balancing adjustments based on where we need staff. And it's, it's a movement thing, but no, we don't, we don't foresee that we won't be able to meet standards, and even better than standards.
Commissioner Jackson, remind me, if I'm correct on this, you had a concern about girls moving into an open dorm?
Yeah, I have a list of complaints, but I wanted to balance.
Okay, how was that working out with the girls moving from a more secure facility to a little bit less secure facility?
It is, it's a significant difference. It's, I don't want to say it's challenging, because they do benefit from the social aspect of it. The first night, the staff did report that the girls were a little restless. They didn't sleep well, but that lasted about two days. The, the youth there are very comfortable. Even their, their parents have made remarks about how it's just such a different environment. We do, we are aware of, you know, the youth that that may be uncomfortable for. And we really do, again, a lot of the staff, they're either CVK staff prior, which was a treatment program. They came from DKC, which is a treatment program. So the majority of the staff there have a treatment mind and a treatment experience and approach. So talking with the kids, engaging with the youth is regular for them.
Thank you.
One thing, during a recent inspection that I had done, I was reviewing a bunch of grievances, and a couple of things came to my attention. One, sort of staff facilitating specifically to the girls, maybe like pack outs, things like that, and then like girls touching other girls inappropriately. Those matters were addressed in their own way. But my, my line of questioning really comes from how, or what measures are being taken to prevent those types of things, just to make sure that girls actually feel safe. And have you guys identified or addressed any incidents in the last couple of weeks? Violence, any career-related kind of grievances?
I think we've had two incidents where staff stopped a fight prior to it actually engaging. Even the first day, when the girls arrived, they made it known that they were going to fight this girl and that girl. And so we just separated them, because we have the room and the space to do so. So the staff don't just let hearings or rumblings like that just go without being, without it being addressed. So they're very proactive. And again, that has to do with how they engage, how they listen, how they're right next to their, to the youth. So the, the staff, I mean, and this is without even having to tell a supervisor, they are, they are on it. They're on top of it. I mean, that has a lot to do with they are veteran staff, which is another advantage of ours for them to be there.
I will say, I feel very confident, knowing that Ms. Evans has boots on the ground. She's very effective at what she does, and I think the girls really trust her, so.
How about visiting?
Can I just add, Commissioner Jackson, thanks for saying that, because I, Kim is a professional, and she's very deliberate in what she's talking about here. But the enthusiasm that I witnessed personally while being there, especially with Assistant Superintendent Mosella Evans, I mean, she had that place ready. They were rehearsing, they were scripted to receive those girls. And the expectations, when the girls arrived to have dinner, all the staff sat down with the girls. And I want to also commend DMH, DMH clinicians that were there, were sitting down, having personal conversations with the girls. And then the, the work leading up to visitation, the phone calls that were happening daily to the parents to let them know. And again, a big shout out again to DYD for their partnership in securing the lift vouchers for us to have parents use that last weekend. This weekend, I believe, we only had one, one parent because of the rain. But there's a lot of good things that are happening. I know it's still a work in progress, but I just wanted to make sure I complimented both Kim Binion and Mosella Evans on their work.
Commissioner Harris?
Thanks, Director Binion, for that, and for, for all of you for the thought that was put into this. I have two concrete questions. One is, what is happening with pregnant girls? And the other is, are staff, is staff carrying OC spray at Kilpatrick?
Staff do not carry OC spray at Kilpatrick. No one has it on their person. And for the pregnant girls, we did not bring up, we did not transfer pregnant girls to Kilpatrick. They remained at Los Padreinos. Subsequently, one was released, and the other, we're working on her placement order, I do believe.
Is the plan to be able to have pregnant and mothering girls at Kilpatrick? Or will they remain at LP or another facility when, when they are in, when they are detained?
So we do have preparation for pregnant girls. We have a youth lactation room, a baby bonding room. However, I believe with the board's recent motion, that we, as a department, are rethinking that, and that is, is still in, in motion. So that was one of the significant reasons why we left the pregnant girls, the pregnant youth at Los Padreinos.
Commissioner Connie?
So I know that at the root of this depopulation plan was to improve staffing. Can any of you speak to staffing, at least at LP, whether that has been improved, given that I think the last report that we received was two months ago, when the chief stated that 200 people had called out in a single weekend?
So we continue to monitor the staffing for Los Padreinos. We are within our compliance numbers. We haven't moved any staff out, although the population has decreased. So we remain stable. We haven't had any alerts, as we did in previous occasions.
Okay, thanks for that. And I just, sorry, I just wanted to share this. Commissioner Mundo, I know that you, or Chair Mundo, excuse me, that you were a part of the probation department for a very long time, and that in your opinion, one week is sufficient time. But I just wanted to share what I received from a defense counsel related to the pre plea report. In quotes, "Bad, boilerplate, hardly ever include service providers, legal teams, social workers, CBOs" that a young person might be connected to. In two instances, the pre plea report was actually rejected, and the court asked that the DPO go back and do a better job. So I just want to lift up the fact that there, there are some kind of significant concerns around the way those reports are being written, and the quality of the information that the court is receiving. And I just think it's appropriate for us to talk about what's happening now, and what DPOs and folks who are writing these reports are providing to the court, like presently. As it relates to Kilpatrick, and I believe you said there are 16, or someone shared that there were 16 girls, right? Who are there right now, are girls and gender expansive youth? Of those 16, did every single one of them receive visitation as recently as this last weekend?
So not every youth received visitation, but every youth has had access. We've done a promotion for the ride share, so they can meet at Los Padreinos, receive a ride up to the facility. Phone calls were made to the families, information was shared. I believe it's also on our public website. We have engaged with the phone calls to the youth with the kids on both weeks to make sure that the parents
sure that the parents are aware that that is an option. I think it was just mentioned that the rain was an obstacle for this weekend for some of our parents, but we've definitely been promoting visitation. Campus Kilpatrick actually has visiting on Saturday and Sunday so that we can optimize the opportunity for the location with the low population.
Have, how have parents kind of, has there been any feedback from parents related to visitation or accessing Kilpatrick?
So I can speak to the first week. I had a great conversation with the parents that were present. They had a lot of positive feedback. They shared some of the concerns that you have about L P. And I took that. I spoke to Mr. Arcos about some commissions that we're going to do to engage parents with feedback, but they had excellent feedback about coming up to the facility and the drive. They actually said they felt it was okay based on what they saw, the services and the environment that their youth was in.
Sorry, last question. And if you have a chance, can you provide the programming calendar for the girls and gender expansive youth at Kilpatrick?
Will do.
I'm looking at Sarah, but I think we have it.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes, Ms. Binion, again, I really appreciate that you guys have crafted a mission statement. I feel like it's a very important and intentional thing to have in place. I think it's another story for operations and interactions to reflect that, and so that's something I trust that you guys are all dedicated to. Does that belong to a larger document or something that you guys have created that we could look at?
It's not in a document. We've placed it in our trainings as part of our intention in setting the culture, but it's not in a document at this time.
I mean, I'd love to be able to review what you guys have put together. We're oftentimes looking for as much information as we possibly can have access to to really understand big picture as well as what's happening on the ground. I think that would help us.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item number five. We will discuss and take possible action on a presentation from the Los Angeles County Probation Department on the frequency and process of transferring youth to adult court and for filing charges against youth for incidents occurring inside the facility. The P L C specifically asked the presentation to address questions outlined in the motion passed by the P L C on October 9, 2025, which has also been attached to today's agenda. Here to present on this item are Director Suzanne Lyles and Acting Deputy Director Jocelyn Roman. No longer acting, I, hey, I didn't write this, congratulations.
Also attached to the agenda is a detailed spreadsheet with the numbers around transfer motions. It's titled something like Report Back, I think is how it's titled, in the link on the agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you for the opportunity. Director Suzanne Lyles has responded to questions one and two that are listed in the table, the spreadsheet that you received. And I'll address any questions related to question number three, the transfer motions. So Suzanne. Want to just start with any questions, start from the?
No, we like our presentation, the numbers.
I don't actually have a answer. Oh, no. So, so you could see through, put together, I actually reviewed all of the current addressing specifically the question, the frequency of the petitions for the youth to be transferred to juvenile to adult court. And so the total number of youth pending transfer, as you can see, is actually 62. I had submitted a correction, I'm sorry, after this, so it's not 63, it is 62. Of those 62, there have been, in 2024, 10 reports completed, and in 2025, 30 reports completed. And I just want to add to that is that that's when the reports are actually ordered by the court. Sometimes these motions last for several months prior, or sometimes several months after that report is actually submitted. So these numbers are just specifically for those reports that were submitted during that time period. So for instance, we've had reports that were submitted in 2023 that are still have cases that are pending. So just wanted to see, because sometimes the numbers don't quite look aligned, but that's part of the reason why. And then you could see in the chart, that's just some basic demographic information that was asked for specifically relating to the reports that were submitted. So you could see there is some, you know, I think the demographics kind of speak for itself, most specifically for like the charges, the most serious charges. You know, of course, the vast majority of those cases are for murder and attempted murder, and the ones that are not are specifically related usually to a sex offense. So it's pretty self-explanatory there. Any questions so far? Okay. So for the question number two about the frequency with which probation recommends transfer to adult court and how often the court approves those transfer petitions, so again, recommending out of those numbers, the 10 of 10, they were recommended transfer to adult court. Out of those 10 reports that were submitted in 2024, we recommend it as a department transfer to adult court all 10 times. Out of the 30 that were submitted in 2025, 28 of those were for a recommendation of transfer to adult court. So you can see by the next area, though, a lot of these cases, of course, as I mentioned, are still pending. So the frequency with which the court is approving, in 2024, they approved it twice. In 2025, they approved it once. Those are where the court ordered the transfer to adult court at the resolution of that court case. And then the concurrence rate, which is in the next section, in 2024 was two out of four, which was 50%. That is basically saying we recommended it twice and the court followed it, sorry, in transfer, the court, we recommended it twice out of the four times the court ordered it. And then the next time, we recommended one out of five, which was 20%. And then I added a couple of little footnotes, just saying that, of course, there are still cases that are pending. Of the 2023 cases, six are still pending. Two of those cases were ordered to remain in juvenile. That kind of offsets that two out of four. And then on the second footnote, 23 of those cases are still pending. Four of those cases were ordered to remain in juvenile, and then two of the cases, the district attorney withdrew the motion.
Of course, Commissioner Canales?
So in, right here, the frequency which probation has recommended, the 10 out of 10 and 28 out of 30, but then the next part where 2X and 1X, does that mean the court rejected probation's recommendation for transfer?
That was for when the court approved it. So they approved it twice and then in 2024, and they approved it once in 2025.
And then, but then probation, it just would seem as if probation is over-recommending then with that, if the court's actually rejecting it, right, in a way, you think?
I don't know if I say their court's rejecting it, it's that they just make their order, they didn't follow the recommendation that was made by probation. I don't think that necessarily speaks to rejecting our recommendation.
Okay, but probation recommended that they be transferred to adult court, probably maybe part of the global depopulation plan.
I, yeah, I'm not sure I would say that, but.
I know, assumption, strike that.
Commissioners?
Yeah, just, I know we had a conversation in the past commission meeting about data, right, and and just how data is presented. I'm imagining that this chart that we're discussing, you know, obviously is made available to people when they join the WebEx, but I think that might be just helpful in the future. Whenever we're discussing data, that we also display it live for folks to be able to follow on their mobile devices, on their laptops, so they can kind of follow along. But I guess to the point about data, it's really hard to follow and make meaning of data when it's presented in a way where like the frequency with, frequency which the court approves transfer of a juvenile case to adult court, and we just put 2X or 1X. That's just a very hard kind of like way to follow it because it begs the question of what does that mean? And then the the reader is having sort of like make meaning of that. And I think it allows folks to come to a wrong impression, which is why questions like, it sounds like the court is sort of like not in alignment with what the recommendation that probation is making, et cetera. But I just, I want us to sort of like really zero in on like how we are managing data and presenting and telling the stories that the data might present to us, right? I know that we had someone here discussing data at a at a previous commission meeting, but I'm one, I'm hoping that as a part of that conversation, we can be a, do a better little, a better job at at kind of, you know, disseminating information, make sure that data is clear, that that it inspires fewer questions because of the clarity that it already provides. And so I'm just looking at the 2 slash 4, 50%, like it's just, it's just all that feels a bit difficult to sort of like follow. And I just want to kind of just raise that, you know, the three of us were just sort of making the comment about this thing's really, really confusing. So just wanted to kind of note that.
Thank you. Other questions, commissioners? I just, I do have a couple of questions. Just quality control, again, given the crisis in the field and the significance of these reports in particular, what the requirements they have under 707B. Is there a group that is specifically assigned these or are they just randomly distributed as they come in, the reports themselves?
They're assigned when the court orders the report. They are assigned to the investigative office that is correlates with the youth zip code.
If we don't have any other questions or concerns or comments, Wendy, do we have any public comments or written comment?
There was no written public comment before the meeting. If you'd like to make written public comment, please send it to info@poc.lacounty.gov. If you want to make public comment online, use the little raise your hand function or dial star three on your phone. And we'll start in the room with Mr. Bell.
I think I'm a little more awake.
Oh, no. Second or bad?
It might be a little bad since I'm actually thinking, until we're able to really separate the age groups, we actually need to make more recommendations. You guys, you guys go and you and you supervise the kids and you and you get the feel of the kids. When I do my inspections, I talk to our officers. And a lot of these grown men, I'm not going to say kids, they're grown men, they're kind of influence the younger people. So you can't have that. You can't have a 16-year-old in there with a 23-year-old. Yeah, their brains aren't developed to 25, but there's a difference, there's a huge difference. And if we can't, we don't have a building to separate it, then we got to let these young men know that if you go after these young kids like that and try to manipulate them and do that, you're going to get charged, you're going to get held to what you are in an adult. And that's what these 23-year-olds are. We are on a job of rehabilitation. Rehabilitation these men are, and putting them back on the streets. When they walk out of Silmar, they're not going to look, they're not going to be seen as you guys see them, as young men with undeveloped brains. They're going to be seen as grown men. And I'm coming as a person who was about three months ago assaulted by a 19-year-old. Now, we'll save that young man's life was the fact I had a badge, you know, I'm on the job, I had a badge, but on the street, I'm handling it a little different. I'm not going to ask if your brain developed yet. No, you're a grown man and you just attacked me. I'm going to defend myself. This is, we need to get these kids, these young men, ready for reality. Reality is, they're not going to be seen as kids out there. Reality is, when they go to their job, when they go to work, they're not going to be seen as, oh, you had a rough life. You're going to have to do your job or you're going to be held accountable. So to me, we need a little bit more of that.
Lupe will unmute your microphone. Lupe, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can begin.
I wasn't really clear on these kids that are being moved from juvenile hall and charged with adult crimes. Are they being housed at county jail? Or are they being housed at, still at the juvenile hall? And if they're still at juvenile hall and they have to go to court, whatever adult court they're in, that they're, they have to go to, while they're there, are they being housed separately from the adults that are going to court already? Can somebody from probation answer those two questions for me, please?
Yeah, let me just frame that a little differently. In the recommendation for transfer to adult, there's also a recommendation as to where the youth should be housed. What do those recommendations look like? Are we asking the court to move the youth from the juvenile hall to county jail? Or are they remained in juvenile hall throughout the process?
In the reports that I reviewed, majority of the time, we are recommending they remain in juvenile hall. They will move over to county facility, usually after the fact, if they've had a number of incidents while they've been detained, of course, if they're 18 and over. And then they will make a motion to the court to then house them at county jail. But for the most part, while they're going through the transfer process, they are still remaining at juvenile hall.
The age doesn't trigger the motion, does it? It's just the behavior?
No, I don't want to speak 100%, but pretty, it's the behavior, because he will house them throughout their process if their behavior remains consistent with what is appropriate at a juvenile hall setting.
Commissioner Kreiter?
I just would like to understand a bit, on the back of the document that you, that you presented to us, I'm looking at 2024, ethnicity, 2024, three black people, 2025, 13, 2024, seven, and 25, 15, male, 10 in 2024, in 2025, there are 27. Can you tell the story behind why a such a large increase in in those particular demographics?
I can't speak specifically to the demographics, but motions are filed by the district attorney. So when we get a youth who is going through a motion transfer, it's a district attorney who's filing. So there was an increase in 2024 to 2025 of the number of motions that were filed in court. And then that would, you know, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but I would say there was also a different district attorney who came into office around that time, who may account for some of those increases.
So I'm glad you brought that up because I'm a little surprised that my colleagues have not really jumped on this. Let me give you some data, because this this information is an indictment of our system, not probation. There are 62 kids motion for transfer hearings. On October 1 of 2025, there were 282 kids in our hall. That means at least 20 to 24% are being held on transfer motions at some level. That's a huge number when you think about Prop 57. When you look at the 707B requirements, it's almost designed to keep, in fact, it is designed to keep youth in juvenile. So the DA is filing. Now, I don't know if the DA is filing any more than Goscombe. That would have to, well, we know that this is here, but we don't know what the numbers were before. And we don't know what the numbers were with Lacy. That timeline cannot be presented by probation. It's got to be presented by the attorneys in the court, right? We also know that over 112 kids currently have been held over 90 days in a system that's not a criminal court. Over 90 days and up to 1,000 days. Out of those kids, 46 are 187s. That means that, well, it doesn't mean anything actually, because those those residing hearings could also be homicide cases that were before, right? Of the 19 kids that are currently housed for homicide, bookings of homicide, 19 have lat scores that are under seven. One had a lat score of two. Now, if you really look at the transfer motion report, it talks about the environment the youth grows up in, it talks about the home the kid grew up in, not just the environment externally. It asks about any contributing factors from the family the kid was raised by. And given all that, it's unclear to me how the district attorney's office makes this decision. When I look at this information, it seems to me that probation is recommending detention solely based on the offense, not on all the not on all the factors. And the offense only is covered by two of the five criteria. And all the court has to do is find three other criteria suitable for juvenile. So this data, for me, is an indictment of a system that has to be reviewed. And it's unfortunate that this data is presented here and we only have oversight of the probation department. But this really is driven by external forces. And fortunately, the department in its effort has provided us an area of discussion. Commissioner Meredith?
Yes, for those who don't know, 187 is the penal code section for homicide, murder. It is an interesting concept we have to rehabilitate these youth we have. We realize that many of them have not fully developed. On the other hand, the district attorney's office should get at least a report documenting all the facts on the family history, employment history of school to take into consideration. And we do not have oversight of the DA. But I believe that the DA has taken into consideration public safety as much as the welfare of the youth, or at least I like to believe we're looking at a balance there.
The district attorney, we were establishing this, files the motion for transfer. But the probation department does have absolute control over the recommendations that they make. And we are seeing in the data that was provided by the department, in 2024, they recommended transfer 100% of the time. And in 2025, they recommended it 28 out of 30 times. Not good at math, but it's a high percentage. So the department is responsible for those recommendations. They are responsible for, you know, what they're putting into these reports. I know we talked about reports a little bit earlier, but this is a, I disagree with Chairman Mondo and his assessment of how these reports, you know, the preplea reports can go. Transfer reports are a really significant part of what happens at a transfer hearing or a negotiation for, you know, a non-transfer result, right? And we should keep talking about this idea, it was sort of brushed over, that, you know, the court is finding, is not finding for transfer when the department's making such high statistical rates of recommendation and the court's saying, whoa, no, right? We're not, we're actually going to go with that recommendation. And the transfer report is a really, really significant thing and I don't want to gloss over that, even if the district attorney is the one filing the transfer motion and they're prosecuting the case. Everybody in that courtroom is looking at basically every single word in the transfer report and the ultimate recommendation that the department is making. And that's a significant responsibility. And I think we really should dig into, you know, the laws, the updated criteria, the updated standard of proof and what, how, who's writing transfer reports, how they're being trained and what the updated law is and what the criteria is they're using to make these assessments and recommendations. This is, this is the most significant thing that you can do, that can happen in a young person's life. And we can disagree all day about who should go, who shouldn't, philosophies, you know, imparting lessons, all of this stuff. But the fact of the matter is, transfer to adult court is, is just so serious and I'm really concerned that the department is making recommendations at such a high rate, you know, 100% and let's call it 95, 93 to 95.
Just a point of clarification, please. I just want to make sure that like, I'm understanding, so what Commissioner Harris is saying is that like, within probation's locus of control are the recommendations that the department makes, right? I'm understanding that this document in front of me is, is the data about the recommendation the department is making, not the DA's office is making. So when I asked about the numbers about from 3 to 13 for black youth, 7 to 15 for Hispanic youth, 10 to 27, almost 200% increase for males, is this the probation's data or is this the district attorney's data?
Probation's.
And so the answer I was given earlier was about, oh, this is, that's the district attorney's, not ours. And so like, who owns, how I understood your question, so this is why I'm asking, point of clarification. So can you clarify that I asked, can you tell me the story behind the increase from 3 to 13, 7 to 15, et cetera? And then I thought the answer I got was district attorney rather than probation initiated these transfer reports and the demographics of the folks that it impacts are the people in the back of this. And so who owns that? Probation or the district attorney? And I know I can be very muddled in my communication, but am I being clear in that question? Okay.
Yeah, I think what we're saying is it's our data. We're reporting our data. I don't think she was referring to, it's the DA's decision. She was just referring to the referrals and that, as Commissioner Mondo also mentioned, it's solely based on the offense. So, but kind of going back a few more steps to your original question is that data, right? And how we're collecting it and how it's making sense to those people who are reviewing it. We need to kind of refine the type of reports that we're putting together when we come to these meetings for you. So we can eliminate that confusion.
And I appreciate that. Thank you, Deputy Arcos. I just wanted to kind of get back to the question then. So if this is, if these numbers represent transfer motions that are, or transfer reports that are initiated by the department probation, then what is the story? Why are they, why are they, if these are your numbers, what is the story from 7 to 15 or 3 to 13? Do we, do you, do you have that information or is that still like, you need to sort of like, take some more time with that? Why, why are so many more, why are there so many more this year versus last year? What is happening in the halls? It has behavior shifted? Like what was initiated sort of like the, these numbers from our, from your department?
No.
Yeah, I don't know that we could give you a story that wouldn't be anecdotal without looking at these reports to see what was driving the recommendations. And again, I always welcome the commission putting forth another motion for more clarification or more specific data that they're looking for, that we could come back and discuss in more detail. But to give you the answer today, Commissioner Kreiter, I don't think we'll have that for you. That would be something that'd be satisfactory.
So.
Well, I just, is that when I mention the district attorney, it is because the data itself is based off of the number of reports were completed for these different time periods. We don't say how many reports are being ordered. The district attorney, when I reference the district attorney is because they're the ones who are making the motions. The courts are the ones who are ordering the reports. This information is based off of those orders we're getting to complete reports, which if there's an increase, it really, in my thought, doesn't have anything to do with anything significant going on with probation. There's straight demographic numbers saying these are the reports, the demographics of the reports that we've been ordered to complete based off of the motions that have been filed in court.
Commissioner Harris?
Can you tell us why your percentage of recommendation, your department's percentage of recommendation to transfer is so high in 2024 and 2025? Is that something you're able to tell us today?
I probably wouldn't be able to specifically say why those recommendations are so high. What I could offer as some additional information is that, again, these transfer motions are a very long process. When I was actually doing the data, I averaged from motion to resolution on the cases that did resolve over 800 days. So anytime during that period, they could ask for that report. But in the meantime, while they're going through these settings and hearings, the district attorney and the defense counsel are offering up a number of information, different reports, different motions, experts being appointed. So they may ask for probation to submit a report in the beginning of 2024. That case may continue throughout 2025, get resolved, and then they make that decision. So while I do believe, you know, that this number needs to be looked at and examined, I also believe that given the DPOs are providing reports with the best information that they have available to them at the time when the reports are being requested from them. And so they're giving the best recommendation they can give. Significant things happen in the meantime during these hearings and then the court resolves the case. They don't always ask for probation to come back and do a new report based on all the information that has been given to them throughout the year, two years that this case had, may have been in court.
In closing this item, Commissioner Harris, I'd like to state that we're in agreement 100%. All I indicated that it's enough time. My concern and the reason I have pushed for this agenda item is quality. It's the quality of it. And for people to understand how significant this is, what I have not shared, and I will share now, is that when this law passed in 2016, in November, I started communicating to, I was still a probation officer, I communicated to the administration at the time that we had to move on this. When that didn't work and I left the department, I continued to push on this. They got tired of me in 2023. I want you to think about that. Six years. We're a liberal county. It took Orange County less than a year to move on this. Sacramento County, less than a year to move on this. How were we behind? I'm going to tell you. I had conversations with the public defender's office. I have emails. They weren't as concerned as I was. In Sacramento, it moved quickly because the public defender's office in Sacramento moved quickly. This is a systemic issue and everyone in this room is correct. The quality and the recommendations, those are high, given the nature of the law. So we're in agreement. My only comment was that it can be done by a capable probation officer within the timeframe. And we have those. And maybe we need to assign specialists for that, but we do have them. And it's just a matter of making sure that those reports, we get feedback from the public defender's office, feedback from the district attorneys. There's a lot of quality control here. So we're going to adjourn for a break, if that's okay with you guys?
We're sorry, we're just, we're missing one piece of the motion. I'm not sure if that was addressed.
Oh, that's right.
I might have been distracted in trying to make sense of this document, but the, the how often does probation initiate new charges against youth for incidents occurring while they are detained in probation's custody? I didn't see that data on here. Does that exist somewhere else?
Can we bring that back after a short break? It's 11:20, we'll be back at 11:30? It's 11:20, we'll be back at 11:30. Why so many, oops. Commissioners, it is now 9:30, we're 15 seconds over our break. Good morning. Trying to feel like paparazzi. Oh, that smile.
Commissioner Mundo, I'll note for the minutes that commissionership has arrived and joined us. Thank you.
Thank you. So as we left, Commissioner Kukani remind, was it Kukani? Reminded us of the second part of the data, and that is filings within the institutions. I'm not sure who from probation will be discussing this.
Yes.
Mr. Arcos, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll cover that. Thank you. And I know, just to give it some context on, on the shape of where this data was drawn from is in 2024, the Chief Vera created a juvenile and safety welfare task force to investigate crimes within the facilities and narcotics that were being, coming into the facility, et cetera. And that kind of evolved into what we now have called the Intelligence and Investigative Services Unit, which is a dedicated unit of officers from this special enforcement operation. There are four officers assigned to Los Pedrinos and four officers assigned to Berry J. They have a supervising deputy probation officer that oversees both teams. And then there's one director, Michael Wade, that oversees the, the unit. So, and that's kind of, I want to just give you all a little bit of context for the functionality of that work that's happening. So for, in 2024, the Juvenile Safety and Welfare Task Force initiated eight, eight arrests within the facility. They were all young adults. And they were, we could not find any tracking for youth during the time in 2024. So the eight listed are all young, young adults. And in 2025, that is, the number is 28. That's broken down into 17 are youth and 11 are young adults. Of those 11, seven remain pending case. One was disowed and three were remanded back to probation on that. So I'm just trying to cut through the, on the numbers here for you. And I sent this to you as well, no? No? What do you have?
I'm looking at Janay. I don't believe that we have that document. I know it's not attached to the agenda, but I don't think we have it in our.
I'm so sorry.
Documents.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's forwarded, but maybe.
Okay, if you did, I certainly apologize. I guess what I'm asking you is maybe you could actually read through the numbers as we're discussing it. And Janay and I will look for it as well.
Okay, apologies. Okay, so how many youth and young adults and new charges brought against them? For instance, occurring inside of Los Angeles County probation detention facility in 2024 and 2025 by facility, age, gender, race, developmental disability and charges? And how many of those were brought in adult court? So new charges inside of Los Angeles County probation detention in 2024, there were eight young adults. Again, there was no tracking mechanism for youth during that period of time. And in 2025, there were 28. 11 young adults were brought into adult court in 2025. For instance, occurring inside of Los Angeles County probation detention facility. So 39% and 61%, 17 youth had a new charge brought against them. For instance, occurring inside of Los Angeles County probation detention facility. On the demographics, sorry, commissioners, I'll try and read this. By year, 2024, for age, there, there was no 14-year-olds, no 15-year-olds, no 16-year-olds, no 17-year-olds, they were all young adults. So 18 years old, there were seven. 20-year-olds, there was one, with a total of eight. Ethnicity, black, there was two, Hispanic, six. Males, all, all males. The facility, it was, they were all LP. Charges for those in 2024, three for assault on staff. Four for narcotics. There was one kidnapping charge and that's it for 2024. That kidnapping charge was dismissed, is what I looked into that one. For 2025, for age 14, there was one. For 15, there was two. 16, there were seven. 17-year-olds, there were seven. 18-year-olds, there were seven. 19 years old, one. 20-year-old, one, 21, two. Ethnicity, black, 11. Hispanic, 16. White, one. All, all male. By facility, Berry J, there was three. Camp Afroball, there was one. For LP, there were 24. The charges are assaults on staff, 18. Assaults on youth, three. Narcotics, six. And there was one criminal threat on staff, or one. The questions around, I think was also asked about the policies. There are two or three different policies that were in here. And I'll, again, I apologize all for those to you so you can distribute to the commissioners. One thing that is occurring is a draft of a new policy to codify the, the expectation and work on making or initiating arrests within the facilities. That's a a policy that's currently in progress. And those are the stats. And again, I can, I'll send this to Janay immediately after the meeting so she can print it for the commissioners. One thing that I failed to say in the context leading up to this was also included is that previously before the, the Juvenile Safety Welfare Task Force and the ISU team were configured, officers within these facilities and halls could initiate their own arrest. They could do this. And it was not controlled and not captured in a manner that would be consistent with examining these cases. So the, the effort has been to really get a hold of this. Our officers that are assigned to the Intelligence Investigative Services Unit all have been to detective training schools, have been working with the district attorney's office on filing guidelines and expectations. And we're doing a much better job of capturing the statistics. But there are still a few areas that we need to do a little bit better job on.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I know you had something in front of you and I'm.
Any particular number you want restated?
I could do another follow-up in the December meeting if you'd like to, after you've had a chance to examine it, or send the questions through, through Wendy. Okay.
Commissioner Kukani, I'd like to hear if you have a question?
Just related to the, the policy, I know you're going to share the existing, I think you said you're going to share the existing two or three different policies.
Yes.
I think at the last meeting I had shared that there were a group of us who were chatting with Felicia Cotton, I believe, early, I don't know, maybe 2024, about a policy that she was working on. And it sounds like you're now drafting a new policy. So just wondering on when we can expect to see that, like what the timeline is so that we can follow up accordingly?
If it, if it gets approved, I will have it to you by the next meeting.
Okay. And if I'm reading this correctly, and I don't even know if I took down the right numbers, maybe it just makes sense to wait until the next meeting where I can actually make sense of what I put down here.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
Hey.
We did what? Yeah, you did.
Hey. With no further questions, comments, or concerns, we will move on to agenda item number six. We will discuss and take possible, oh, is she here?
She's online.
Oh, okay. We will discuss and take possible action on an update on the approved motion requesting information regarding probation departments' use of consultants during the past two fiscal years and costs associated with those contracts. The motion from the September 15 POC meetings is attached to today's agenda as a reference. Presenting on this from the probation department, we have administrative deputy Stacy Lopez-Maddox, who has joined us virtually.
Hi, good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes, would be nice to see you.
I am trying for that. Here we go. Hi, good morning.
We can either start with questions, or if you have a presentation prepared, we would like that.
Um, no, I just wanted to, good morning again. Stacy Lopez-Maddox, administrative deputy. I apologize for not being there in person with my colleagues. I had some family matters to, to handle over the weekend, so thank you for having me call in remote. And I understand the request was back in the September POC meeting for a list of all of our consultants for the past two years. We provided that information to the commissioners, I believe, just kind of in the last couple weeks. So I'd be happy to take questions. I do just want to say that, you know, there's, they're being under an emergency order over the past two years. We found it necessary to, you know, consult outside experts to help us with the various challenges that the department was having. And so with, that was within staff mentoring, with technology, with training, just to name a few of the areas where we needed consulting. Some of our consultants dropped off after a year of work for us and completing their deliverables. And then we have others that have continued with the department on a multiple-year contract basis for the areas that we are still working on. So I just wanted to just kind of high level go through, you know, that piece of it and why we have consultants. And it's not unique to probation. You know, a lot of departments and agencies also contract out with outside experts when we don't have that expertise internally necessarily, and also when people retire from their positions who held that expertise. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions that the commissioners have.
Commissioner Prater?
Hello, Ms. Lopez-Maddox. Just wanted to kind of, the, the question on this particular agenda item was about the contracts and the associated costs. And I think I reviewed all of the contracts that were forwarded to us via email and even in today's summary. And those costs weren't listed in either of those documents, unless I missed it. Did someone catch that? But I didn't see cost for any of the contracts attached.
There's a summary document that is a, that looks like a chart. That's attached.
It should show the hourly rate, the total cost of the purchase order or contract amount. So that, I believe, was all submitted to the commission.
Oh, you know what? I stand corrected. I remember that. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Commissioner Harris?
Hi. Um, thank you, Ms. Lopez-Maddox. And I, I know this is a lot of work and we appreciate getting it. I, there, there is some missing information that I think I want to sort of highlight and hope that we can put over to the December meeting to maybe, maybe give you some more time. I believe that we, there were 36 consultant contracts listed, and we received the scope of work document for 17 of those. So I'm hoping that we could get all 36. And that we are missing in a number of them, dollar amount, budget detail and pay schedule. The, there, also, most of the contracts list, Ms. Sheila Williams doesn't necessarily give us a good sense of who's doing the day-to-day work with the consultant. And, you know, the, also want some more clarification on the method used to procure the contract or legal agreement, whether it was an open competitive bid or, or not. There are a number, I, I'm not going to go through all of the specifics. Again, I really appreciate the hard work that it took to get us this, but I think that there are some, there's some outstanding items. And if it's okay, process-wise, we could email them, the staff could email over the specific missing information, and we could ask for that information to be completed by the December, you know, in advance of the December meeting. So we could have a more robust discussion then.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Harris, it's not a complete document. I apologize for that. So absolutely, whatever information's missing, we, we can get that to you, obviously, before the meeting. So you'll have time to review it. I do want to touch on the way this, the consultant contracts were procured. During the, a couple of years ago, when we started contracting for consultant and expert services, we did use the purchase order process, which is a process that's approved by the county that goes through ISD. And that's a, for a one-year purchase, which most of these were initially. And then if we, again, I mentioned earlier, we went into a multi-year contract with some of these consultants. That then in turn goes through our contracting process, which all of those contracts are approved by the board. So that's how we procure them on a multi-year basis. So we have two separate offices within probation that handle those procurements, but it was all done within the county contracting and purchasing laws, rules, all of that good stuff. So all of that, that's how they were handled. But again, if they were going to be with us longer than a year, then we converted that purchase order into a multi-year contract. And in some cases, we did, and we still have some of those consultants working for us. And with regards for the contact, we can update you on who the program contacts are with regards to each of the consultants and who's managing them. Well, we can provide that update.
Yeah, I have a quick question. What role are the consultants playing in the implementation of the global plan?
Well, they have multiple roles because we have still consultants helping with staff mentoring, staff training, again, technology, because we're implementing, working on implementing a case management system for the juvenile and adult facilities. So it's, they're playing a huge role in everything that we're doing right now. And again, those are the consultants that we have on a multi-year basis.
Are you seeing a difference? Is there like, like a notable difference in kind of like the services that they're providing and how they're assisting the department?
Well, I've been here almost 90 days, but I have seen a difference from what I'm reading from happened, you know, a year ago, say 18 months ago. We're definitely seeing changes happening within the department that needed to happen. So with everything, it takes time, but we also feel we have the expertise for all of these areas to help us move forward and ensure that also our staff are being trained and mentored and with, you know, to do their jobs appropriately.
Commissioner Meredith?
Realizing you've only been here 90 days, one of the concerns I have on consultants or any contract services we have, is there an evaluation process to determine that they satisfactorily completed or exceeded what we expected of them?
There is, Commissioner Meredith. So we also have a contract monitoring unit that also looks at all of our contracts on a regular basis. So definitely that's being reviewed as far as deliverables from consultants and what they're doing for us. And if they're not meeting the mark, then we are obviously, you know, letting them go through the contract process.
Commissioner Kokani?
Is there some sort of, I don't know, like rubric or protocol that the probation department goes through when you're deciding we need a consultant versus we have kind of like the internal capacity to hold this?
Not that I'm aware of, but having worked in a large agency before where consultants are obviously needed for certain expertise, you know, doing some research on what's, who's the best person, what's needed at the time, and also at the time for probation, we were in emergency state, so we definitely, and still are, and we definitely needed to find some consultants that were available for specifically staff mentoring to start off with. And so, you know, in that case, we were strategic in trying to find the right folks at the right time that could come on board and help us immediately.
Sorry, thank you for that. And then another question was related, I know that the initial motion called for both like legal consultants and also like services type consultants. Does the probation department hold or decide when to enter into some sort of consultancy with like a law firm, a representation, or is that strictly in the hands of county council?
I believe that's in the hands of county council, but I can, we can double check on that.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, the list that we sent you all was all the consultants that we are either, that we were contracted for, so I don't believe there was any for legal services that were on there. I have to look at the list again, but I didn't see any for legal services. Yeah.
So in the Order to Show Cause hearing, it's all county attorneys?
I believe so, yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I mean, it's not county attorneys. There are outside firm attorneys, both in the Order to Show Cause hearing, both in the hearing before Judge Hernandez in Superior Court related to the Attorney General's request for receivership, also as it relates to the BSCC determination, there's also outside counsel. So there are definitely non-county council folks who are signing those briefs and who are spending county dollars to represent both the county and probation. So yeah, having that distinction on when it's county council who's engaging in that kind of relationship, or whether it's probation, and if and when probation is requesting like separate single consultant advice would be helpful to know. I mean, I know that the, yeah, county has a contract with like 11 law firms related to representation and all of the sex abuse lawsuits. So I don't know if that's a probation thing or if that's a county council thing.
Is that?
I will check, but I think those are considered legal contracts, so those wouldn't have shown up on the consultant contracts listing. So I do, you're absolutely correct. I mean, if there's outside counsel, then we'll, we would have a list of that, but again, it would come at the advice of county council.
And if they approve, is that information that may be shared?
If we have the contracts, yeah, that's public information.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, comments? Wendy, do we have any public or written comment?
I don't believe there was any written public comment before the meeting on this item. If you'd like to make written public comment, please send it to info@poc.lacounty.gov. If there's anybody in the room who would like to give public comment, please do so or online, raise, use the raise your hand function or dial star three. I'll give it just one second, but it looks like we don't have any public comment.
Okay, unless there's objection, I'll go ahead and close that agenda item and move to Agenda Item Number Seven. I am very pleased to say that all of the items we requested have been received. I recommend that we table this agenda item and thank the department for the responsiveness this month. There were two items on the list that have not been formally requested, which was to request the department to provide written responses to the law enforcement MOA. It was received.
Yes, over the weekend, we did receive that. And I think Janaye forwarded it to the Commissioners and addressed it to the agenda, attached it to the agenda. That was just, that happened over the weekend.
Hey, the rest, I can read?
That's the, it's related to the same.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any comments, concerns? If not, would somebody make a motion to table this item? Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Canales. Wendy, do we have, well, on this one, written or live public comment?
No written public comment. Did anyone want to make public comment on tabling item number seven?
Unless we have questions or further comments, Wendy will call the roll. Wendy?
Probably do a voice vote on this.
Okay. Okay, a voicemail, all in favor?
Aye.
There we go. We will move on to item number eight. Agenda item eight, we will hear a report from Executive Director Wendy Julian. Wendy, please proceed with your updates, and then we will vote to approve the 2026 meeting schedule.
Yes, thank you. So the annual report is not complete, but will be complete and attached to the December agenda for you all to vote to approve. That's really just an outline of the tasks and strategies completed in the last fiscal year. Attached, you will see the third quarter key performance indicators quarterly report, which shows the public engagement and our social media and how the team is doing and reaching out to folks to participate in our meetings, which I will share continues to be really excellent. And then finally, you'll see attached the proposed agenda, I'm sorry, the proposed schedule for meetings. As you know, as is obvious from today's meeting, sometimes we, with the best intentions, schedule meetings with the opportunity to allow the department to be here and not conflict with other meetings. So for example, we rescheduled today's meeting to not conflict with the Order to Show Cause hearing, which was to be held last Thursday, and then it got continued. So there is some level of change that happens with the proposed meeting schedule, but for the most part, you can see that we are remaining on the second Thursday of the month from nine to one, and just putting some placeholders there for a few of the dates that we know conflict. Unfortunately, the BSCC also holds their meetings on Thursdays. Sometimes it's the second Thursday, sometimes it's the third Thursday, like for example, this month, it'll be held this Thursday, the 20th. And so we will do our best to keep in contact with them. I think it's in all of our interest and certainly the department's interest not to conflict with the BSCC meetings, given the expectation that they will be there often. So you can, you can see that we will be alternating between this location here at St. Anne's and Magic Johnson Park. And I don't know whether anybody has any specific questions about the, the meeting schedule. This would be the time if you do, Commissioners, although I can say I haven't spoken to anyone about this, if you wish to consider a more substantive change to the meeting date and time, to bring it up at this point.
Commissioner Meredith?
I'm not about the meeting date and time, I'm just looking at the two locations that we don't have anything for. I would, obviously for the Fifth District, like they see something on the Fifth District because they get left out, but if nothing else, the Hall of Administration, because that would give us a chance to have the justice deputies wander down too.
I agree with you, and the Hall of Administration is always an option that we have. One of the problems with the Hall of Administration is parking. It's very expensive for members of the public, but I agree, we do get representation from county partners at the Hall, so that's certainly an option. I was actually thinking about what you said about the Fifth District. We haven't had a POC meeting in the Fifth District since we began, other than some of our community meetings that we held. So I think that would be an important thing to consider is the possibility of a meeting in Santa Clarita or even in the Antelope Valley or Altadena-Pasadena area. I mean, I think there are, as you can see, I think we do a really good job of allowing the virtual participation opportunity, which is actually better for so many people and is different than when I used to serve on a commission, you know, six years ago, when if you couldn't be there in person, the call in option was pretty poor quality participation. But it is nice to actually be in the room with folks, so I appreciate that suggestion. And I think the leadership team that gets elected in January should decide about whether to have formal meetings or also maybe some, some private, not private, some special town halls in varying locations around the county.
Hey, any other concerns? Right. Hearing none, I would like to make a motion to accept the attached 2026 meeting schedule as presented. May I have a second? Commissioner Ship? Wendy, do we have any written or live public comment?
I don't believe there was any written public comment on this agenda item. If you'd like to make live public comment, please come up to the podium or raise your hand using the raise your hand function or dial star three. No public comment.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, Wendy, please call roll for the vote.
Okay, so we're voting yes, no, or abstain on the proposed 2026 POC meeting calendar, and we will, yes. Okay, Commissioner Canales?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kokani?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Prater has stepped out, Commissioner Ship, and Chairman Mondo.
Yes.
So with Commissioners Terry and Prater being absent, the motion passes unanimously. And we'll go ahead and post that proposed schedule to our website.
Perfect. Okay, moving along. Item number nine is for matters now posted on the agenda to discuss her place on a future meeting agenda for action. Commissioners, do you have any announcements or items you would like placed on a future Commissioner Canales?
Yes, this is just a reminder, Director Newble has been working with the Game Changers Program, and they're going to be at Barry J. Nordoff on November 18th, where she encourages, wait, Tuesday, November 18th, and then to LP on Friday, November 21st, where she encourages probation and community groups that enter the facilities to come and be involved in these events, and us also were invited.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Ship?
Yeah, I know, last time, probation spoke about having a Narcan policy that will be ready, that was a few months ago, so I'm hoping we can get some updates on that Narcan policy.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
I just wanted to make note of the fact that a significant new bill passed, AB 1376, which limits the length of time a young person can be on probation if they are placed in community supervision. It should reduce the number of youth on probation in community supervision at any given time. It may positively impact field services and, and the availability of probation staff given this, this new bill. So I think we should keep our eye on it as the year and time progresses. It, obviously, it's a statewide bill, but I'm just talking about the impact, potential impact here in LA County.
Thank you.
I'd like to suggest, given some of the conversation on the transfer motion today, that we did a town hall earlier in the year that was an educational town hall about the detention process that I'm very proud of. I know Chairman Mondo is as well. And I think this is a topic that would lend itself to a similar education topic with some outside attorneys potentially, and by outside, I mean from outside of the county, who could speak more frankly about the process, both from the prosecutorial and the defense and the advocacy side, to help the Commissioners and members of the public understand what the transfer process is, what it looks like, what the law changes recently and not so recently have been, and maybe to help interpret these numbers, because I would totally agree with Commissioner Prater's earlier statement that the numbers as presented are illustrative to me, except there are some things on there that I really have to sort of dig to understand what they mean. And I think for members of the public, it'd be helpful to have that more of an open conversation about it if you all are comfortable with us scheduling a town hall about that.
Yes, and I would volunteer to help get some of speakers if you need that.
Perfect. Anybody else? Right, so just a couple of things. I'd like to commend Commissioner Ship, he did an amazing job at representing the department, I mean, the POC at the NACO meeting. Great job there. And Commissioner Harris, with regards to 1376, I'd like to put a shout out to the Burns Institute, which worked really hard. I was able to be at some of the hearings, and there was a lot of opposition from the DA's office and the probation association, so I'm getting that over the line was an amazing effort by them, so thank you for bringing that up. And I'd like to remind you all that my tenure will end in a couple of months, and next month, we are going to be having nominations for the new leadership team, so if you can give us some thought, who you would like to lead this great institution.
Are all the positions up or just the chair?
They're all up.
They, they all are elected for one year. The chair is the only position that has a term limit of two years. And also, to be the vice chair, you have to be qualified to be the chair. So for example, Commissioner Mondo could not be the vice chair either, if that makes sense, because he's not qualified to be the chair since the term limit has expired. And that is for just one year, is my understanding from reading the bylaws. So you can be the chair, and then you have to take a break for a year and then come back as the chair, but the, the term limit is for two years.
I think Brooke was volunteering.
Say that again?
I think Brooke was volunteering.
And of course, given the times, I'm working diligently with attorneys to overturn that item. And no more elections. Good stuff. So surely I jest. Okay, unless there's any other comments, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 10. This is an invitation for members of the public to address the Commission on Items Not on the Agenda. Wendy, please facilitate public comment for us.
Okay, I don't believe there's anybody in the audience who wants to make public comment about general public comment. If you do, please come up to the podium. Anybody online for general public comment? Okay, Lupe, thanks for being here today, Lupe.
Thank you very much. I asked two questions earlier, and only one was answered. I'd like to, for the Commission to follow up, are juveniles that are going to adult court when they're being transferred from juvenile hall to the county jail, I mean, not the county jail, the courthouse, are they being housed with the adults at the county courthouse? Or has probation made separate arrangements to separate our probation kids that come in from juvenile hall and keep them separated? kids that come in from juvenile hall and keep them separated from the adults that are going to court also and not mixing them? That's what the question she didn't answer.
Lupe? Okay.
Go ahead and continue.
Sorry, Lupe.
Okay, that's all right. I would like to see in the future, near future, I read the article and I wrote on it also, that Kilpatrick was going to be turned into basically a prison for youth. And I'd like to commission to have more discussion with the public as to, is this true or not? Before everybody's feathers get tangled up, we need to find out if this is true or not. Because I took that Kilpatrick was going to be for juveniles. And I feel like I've been deceived. And now you're going to make it a prison? And is it going to be under CDCR or what, what the plan is? I think it's extremely important for us to know about this. And I solicit the help of the commission. Thank you very much.
I think Commissioner Harris might have some insight here. Oh.
There was an article that I read by a person in, in, in Malibu, in District Three in Malibu that was talking about, it was not a news article as the way I read it, but it, it did contain that information, although it is not accurate or reflective of the current state of affairs as I read the article. And I don't know if that's what Lupe was referring to.
I would agree that the, it was full of inaccuracies. In particular, I think the biggest inaccuracy is that this is somehow new about who the population that would be held at Kilpatrick is when for the last two years it has been step down, internal step down for SYTF, boys and young men. So the, what's happening with Kilpatrick is that there are predisposition girls who will be held there, who are held there now, which is different than it has ever been. This is the first time Kilpatrick has ever been used for predisposition youth, but certainly a probation facility that continues to be operated. That's what Ms. Benyon was discussing today. So it, it is a change in the population, but not a change in the administration of the facility.
Lupe, with regards to your first question, are you asking where the kids are held during the pre, I mean, during the motion transfer hearing or after they've been found unfit for juvenile?
Well, they're going to trial. If probation is asking for them to be tried as adults and they have a court hearing in an adult court, it's just a Compton Court, adult court. And they're going to Compton Adult Court. Are they being housed there while they're waiting to see the judge with adults? Are they being kept separate?
According to Ms. Lyles, the recommendation is that they remain with us while they go through the, their adult trial.
Okay. I actually think what Ms. Ross is bringing up is exactly why we need to have a town hall on this. Because I have talked to Chair Mundo for hours about this issue, about the difference between the transfer of a case and the transfer of custody. Those are two different things. About the time period that it takes, I heard today 800 days sometimes for these transfer motions. So I think it's a complicated issue that merits a lot of education for all of us to understand the process and the custody.
Commissioner Meredith?
Just for clarity, is he referring to the court lockup or is he just referring to?
Detention, just long detention.
The lock, excuse me, Mr. Meredith, the lockup.
Okay, so it would be the court lockup. I'm not sure if that'd be under the sheriff's control or our control, but it's a good question.
Though I would say, Ms. Lupe, that if someone is going, like when a transfer case is being litigated, it's being litigated in juvenile court. So if someone is transferred and the judge makes that decision, then it, then the case goes to adult court and they would very likely be also transferred facility to the adult facility and they be held with, because they're going to be in it, in an adult court setting. But while they're, Chair Mundo is right, if they're facing transfer and the transfer case is active, that's always in juvenile court, they would be, you know, held with young people before their court and after their court date.
Okay, I think we clarified it. All right. Moving on to our last agenda item. I've never had to put a two behind the one. Thank you for joining us and sharing your comments. As a quick reminder, be sure to follow us on social media and subscribe to our YouTube channel at lacountyplc.com, oh no, dot gov. Well, I don't even know YouTube. So to receive reminders about our upcoming meetings, visit our website at poc.lacounty.gov to subscribe to our emailing list. It is now 12:13. May I have a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
Motion, sure.
Who seconded it? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Kukani. Commissioners, please unmute yourselves and vote with a voice vote. Motion carries unanimously. Today's meeting is now adjourned.